All right, I'm not sure what this curve is.
I don't know either. Oh, that's Kim Straub.
I ask everyone if you can please be seated, we'll get started in a moment. We just concluded a special meeting at 6:00 PM closed session and there were no reportable items from that meeting.
Moving on, I'd like to welcome you all here and thank you for joining us for tonight's meeting of the Arinda City Council. For those who need it, there are assisted listening devices on the table at the back of the room for those who wish to use them. I would like to ask our clerk to call this meeting to order and do our roll call.
Okay, Councilmember G. Here. Councilmember Hoxey.
Here.
Councilmember Riley.
Here.
Vice Mayor Iverson.
Here.
And Mayor Malcony.
Here. Thank you.
And now, everyone, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is to adopt our agenda. And I know that we had one public comment on item F3, which is on our consent calendar. But aside from that, Madam City Manager, are there any changes to the proposed agenda?
Honorable Mayor, there are no changes proposed to the agenda.
Okay, so do I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is adopted. Next, we have items for the good of the city. And today, we have a recognition to present to Light Up Arinda. And I would like to ask Carol Bravelli and Kim Wirtstrab, who are co-leaders of this project, to, if you are here, to please come to the podium. There you are, okay. And before, you know, we'd love to hear from you about Light Up Arinda. But before, before we do that, I just wanted to say, I think this comes from the entire city council, this recognition. Because what your organization did to literally bring joy and light to our community during the holiday season was truly wonderful. I cannot tell you how many comments of appreciation I heard throughout our community. And to have a vision like this and then just carry it through, and also to carry through in a way that is sustainable for years to come, is quite an accomplishment. I can only imagine how many hours of work it took to make this happen. But it is, just really, the light you brought us is something that's going to be appreciated, was really appreciated by visitors, residents alike, generationally, children, you know, seniors, everyone, and will be felt for years to come. So thank you. And I know maybe other council members want to say something.
I do.
Well, I'm just thrilled by what you guys accomplished. I think you started it in the spring and you said you were going to get it done by November. And I thought, wow, things don't move that quickly with the city. But you guys did it and I'm just so pleased. And it's just a lasting gift you've given to all of us individually and to the city. So thank you so much.
Yeah, it was so exciting and so lovely to be at the, you know, the opening and have so many people there. It was, it was an incredible sense of community and it was just, it was just amazing. And I, and I, just like the mayor said, the comments have just been marvelous. It's been really nice to hear how many people enjoyed it and appreciated it.
I'm also just so impressed with the work you did to raise the funds to do it so quickly and to bring so many community members together to do that on behalf of the entire community was stellar. Really a wonderful job and thank you for the work that went into that. Okay, and I will tell you that I've heard both, also our city manager really wanted to also do this and was part of the impetus behind recognizing you. So I thank her for that. I do want to read our certificate of recognition is presented to Light Up Arinda and recognition of your vision and hard work to make the community beautification project to wrap trees in downtown Arinda with white LED lights during the winter season and hosting a tree lighting ceremonial event a huge success. We thank you for making Arinda such a special place to live.
Thank you.
I don't know if you wanted, we'll take a picture, but I don't know if you wanted to say anything. You're welcome to, you're not required to.
Well, thank you very much for your support. We appreciate it. And we are looking forward to expanding the program next year. And we'll be continuing to try to raise money in order to be able to do that. So we're grateful for your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to comment that we had pretty much, it was 100% people from Arinda, somehow associated with Arinda, who were the donors. So between businesses, residents, realtors, it was just very exciting to see the enthusiasm.
Great, and I will ask the council to join me here with you for a picture.
Speaking behind you.
Okay. And next on our agenda, item E is public forum. And we have, the public forum is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Additionally, speakers have the option of addressing the council on an item listed on the agenda if you won't be present when that item is taken up. And so I know we have a couple other speaker, a couple speaker cards here for public forums. So I will call those speakers to the podium. And if anyone else wants to speak, please fill out a speaker card, which is over here. Mr. Warrenoff.
Good evening. I'd like to speak tonight to some items that are not on tonight's agenda. First, Madam Mayor, when you ran for office in 2022, one of the items in your campaign, one of your campaign proposals was to hold town halls. And I, my memory isn't what it was when I was younger, but I do not recall the council holding any town halls. The last town hall, the closest thing I recall, I think, was when Councilmember G was mayor and there was a quasi-town hall on the private roads and drains issue, which was very productive. The benefit of a town hall is that unlike the public forum or even unlike commenting on an agenda item, there's no back and forth when we comment here at a public forum. But in a town hall, there can be some back and forth. Obviously, it has to be moderated, but I would urge you to, there are a lot of issues that a lot of residents are concerned about, and I would urge you to set up one or more town halls. Turning to another subject, evacuation. The environmental impact report, the update to it, the safety element, all had a literal laundry list of evacuation mitigation ideas, virtually all of which were to, it says so in the documents, were going to be studied, considered, evaluated. But what has been done? I think the council owes it to the community to provide a periodic status report, updating the community on what is being done. You just take the laundry list, you have three columns, what we've done, what we're going to do, and when we're going to accomplish it by. It's not that complicated. Most or all of you have managed companies, departments, people. It's just basic management 101. And third, relating to housing, I think we are all owed an update on what's happening with the Caltrans parcel. It is, in my opinion, as I have been saying too many times over the years, it is the key to unlock future housing development. And no one knows what's, what's happening with it. I can tell you that I have gotten no response whatsoever from the person who was identified as the person in charge. And I don't know if, who's in charge of following up among the city staff, but I have sent emails, left voicemails, et cetera, all to no avail. I would urge you to please provide an update. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. For public forum, next we have Michael Brown.
Thank you. I wanted to come and speak to you tonight about the situation with the public safety as pertains to the leadership provided by the city council. This is a subject that seems to have been kicked around from committee to committee ever since I've been here in the last 25 years. It'll go for a while and then the committee will get shut down. It'll get rolled into another subcommittee. The latest one, I believe you guys, the Public Safety Subcommittee of the City Council, you shut down at the last city council meeting two weeks ago because of lack of civic engagement. But going back over the last four years, there have been a total of five meetings. One a year, basically just a report from the police department about what they did, you know, how many interactions they had, how many burglaries, blah, 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 blah. But no real outreach or leadership into the community. And I think that kind of, I guess, apathy is sort of, we can see that in, you know, how our homeowners are adopting fuel mitigation, home hardening. And I think I would like to see more focused effort. I will say, I've seen some amazing stuff coming out of the city. I think the people that are in the city hall, they know their stuff. They understand what the responsibilities are. And I, and they, they are really interfaced with the police department and they're interfaced with the fire department. But I think the citizens are getting left out of this conversation, of the understanding of what really should be expected of them and how they can be partners in their own survival so that we are not in that list of Northridge, Arinda, Maraga, and wherever it is in the South Bay that was also in Michael Warro's report. So I'd like to see more active engagement on the part of the city council and leadership in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. For public forum, next we have Sunil Raja.
Hi, thanks for taking my comment. I think, so I'm here to talk about fire safety in general. Sorry, this microphone's a little bit low for me. I think there's three issues that are being conflated at once. One is mitigation, one is what happens in the event of a disaster and what happens with insurance. And I think it kind of benefits all of us to separate those three. But I just want to express to the council that I think no one kind of knows what's happening with all three. And to Nick's point, I think some very clear direction on what's happening would really help the community because I think there are a lot of worried people right now and we're turning to you for leadership on this. So on the event of disaster side, I wouldn't be able to tell you what our evacuation routes are. I doubt any one of my neighbors would be able to tell you what they are. We'd all be in some serious trouble. And we learned from the Paradise Fire that there were unclear evacuation routes, which led to the, led to the disaster there. On the mitigation side, we learned from Tubbs that power lines were the issues, main issue there. But there are other things that we're learning in real time about Palisades. I'd love to see, you know, what we've learned and some sort of quick turnaround on, here's what we plan on doing over the next few weeks because there are a lot of worried people out there with internet connections who've all of a sudden become fire experts. Don't, don't leave it in their hands. You have to, you have to really take control of this issue, in my opinion. And on the insurance issue, it does feel like there's stuff that can be done here, proactively, working with insurers on community mitigation measures to somehow bring down premiums. So it seems like there are a lot of people in the community who want to be activated on this issue and are willing to volunteer to remove harmful brush from things like schools, hospitals, whatever the city needs. So I guess my comment to you is, we really need your leadership right now, clear direction and clear expression of what's going to happen over the next, like, three, six weeks before we head, head into the heart of fire season. So ask humbly for that as soon as possible.
Thank you as well. Thank you all for your thoughtful comments. Do we have any, I don't see any other speaker cards for public forum. Would anyone in the audience also like to speak on public forum? Okay, hearing none, I will close the public forum section of our agenda. Next, we have the consent calendar, item F on our agenda. The consent calendar section of the agenda consists of items that are acted on in one motion, unless a council member or a member of a public request that the council remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion. We have had a request to remove item F3 on impact fees from the agenda. So I'm going to request that that be done. Do I, are there any other items from the consent?
Mayor, I would like to just make a brief comment on F6, please.
On?
F6.
F6, okay.
And that's the one I wanted to pull as well.
Okay. Other than F3 and F6, are there any other consent items that any council member wants to pull? Okay, hearing none. Is, do I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar as amended, which would only include items F1, F2, F4, and F5?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Then, I think next on our agenda, we would discuss item F3. Item F3 is the 2024 Impact Fee Report, AB 1600. And the recommendation is to receive and file the City of Arinda Annual Report of Development Impact Fee Funds for the year ended June 30th, 2024. And I know we have a public comment on that. Before that, do we have a staff report or?
We, we, we could certainly, I could quickly do one. Unfortunately, Doug Alessio is home ill. He's on Zoom. He could potentially talk about it if that's your desire or if you just want to take the public comment on the item. I didn't know if there was any council member comments or questions about this item.
Okay, if there are any, if there are no council member questions, then we will, are there at this time?
I had a question about the park dedication fees. Can you help me understand what those are and what they could be used for?
So I'm going to take, I wasn't here for when this was placed together. But typically, what park dedication fees are is when you have new development that triggers the need for additional park facilities as a result of their development. Then you would be collecting a fee to pay for those future facilities and they would be paying their fair share of those costs.
So they're not and can't be used for work to existing facilities? It's only for future facilities?
You could, you could use the fees for work that either expands or improves beyond current conditions, facilities that help to mitigate impacts of new development. So you could use them on existing facilities, provided that it's about expanding the use of that facility.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any other council member questions? Hearing none, I would like to call Mr. Warrenoff for your public comment on this.
I'm not as tall as Sunil. My comment is about what is, is about something that is not in the impact report, the impact fee report. We are a city, as we all know, of very limited income, very limited sources of income. And my question is whether we are getting the maximum legal amounts of impact fees from developers. I raised this last year, probably raised it the year before, but I don't remember that far back. But, and it probably requires a nexus study. What I recall, I guess the head of administrative services is not here tonight. Did I hear that earlier? But I believe what he said last year when I raised this is that we had done one five years ago or four years ago, whatever he said, which doesn't really address the question of whether we're, we're getting the maximum impact fees. The fact that we may be complying with AB, whatever it is, means we're doing it legally. But I would urge someone to look into whether we are maximizing the impact. Because once a preliminary application for a development is filed and a preliminary application isn't much more than some scratching on the back of an envelope, once that is filed, everything that applies to that project is what was in place on that day. And if someone comes in with some project, you can't then say, oops, we wish we'd, we had raised the impact fees. So I will once again make my plea to do what needs to be done and be sure we are maximizing our fees. I think it's sort of obvious that if we're relying on a study that's several years old and given the rate at which everything is getting more expensive, I think it would be safe to say it is unlikely we are maximizing our fees. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other public comment, speaker cards for item F3. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. I guess I have now what is maybe more of a question, which is, do we, do we know if we are maximizing the impact fees? In other words, do we have the ability to raise those fees for developers? And if, and if we don't know that now, then is, I guess the question would be, is that something that can only, can be done at any time or can it be done?
So I think that we have three fees that we're talking about here. I don't know, the transportation impact fee is a regional fee, is that correct? And so the question, we could find out whether or not they're charging the maximum fee as provided in their nexus study. But I know they're also working on a fee update coming up as well. And so I don't know, Siva, if you can address whether or not they're charging the maximum fee. On the transportation impact fee, and while Siva's walking up to the podium, we'll just comment on the park dedication fee. That's done. So it's actually a Quimby fee. I don't want to explain Quimby fees. I could have Osa try to explain them if you'd like. But basically, you assess, you take a look at the land value and that land value gets updated annually. And then you assess your fee based on this formula that assumes land value. So that typically is at its maximum. But I'll leave it over to Siva to talk about transportation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So for the transportation impact fee, we do have a separate finance authority, LFFA committee. We call it La Marinda Fee and Finance Authority. And through that, whatever we collect, fee we collect, it's based on a nexus study that was done in 2017. I believe that was the last update. So the committee has actually shown interest in revisiting that due to some of the recent improvements. So that is something they will be looking at this year as a possibility of either updating it or redoing the nexus study. That study determines how allocations happen to 50% of the fee that gets collected in the La Marinda area. All three agencies put 50% of the money we collect into the regional part and then the other 50% gets spent locally. And that committee oversees those information. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, are there any other types of fees we could charge? Or is there anything else like a wildfire mitigation fee or an evacuation plan fee or any other kinds of fees we're allowed to charge?
Typically, it is based on projects that are expected to, or anticipated in the coming years. This study, the last one, I believe they looked at at that time up to year 2040. But of course, things have changed quite significantly in the last few years. So as far as defining parameters, they usually bring outside consultant on board to assess and provide guidance to the committee. So I think they will be looking at all those information likely, outside of the typical projects and stuff.
Siva, can you, I know a little bit about it since I sit on the committee. But can you explain again that the fees are charged as La Marinda? So the three communities are, are charging it. Can you explain a little bit about how it then gets sent back to, whether it's Lafayette or Arinda or Maraga?
Yeah, so like I said, the 50% of the fee we collect goes to the regional part. And Lafayette is the sign treasurer for that. So they manage all the fees that gets collected by all three cities. And the idea is to use that collective fund towards a project that will benefit the La Marinda area. So one good example that we are working on right now is the upcoming signals upgrade project. That is, there is two components to it. Like I've previously explained in one of our meetings is the county component. We are getting some support from the Transportation Authority. But there is also a La Marinda component where all of our three agencies are upgrading all our signals. So the match funds for the federal funding we are receiving is coming from this 50% savings we put aside. Now, as far as who gets how much, the nexus study defines it, actually. They, they assess it based on a complex formula as to how much development is going on, how much each city is expected to collect and how the distribution works.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
So it sounds like we really can't do anything about these fees until or unless there's a new nexus study?
Typically, you don't have any, you don't modify your fee. Your fees get updated annually based on Your fees get updated annually based on some index, whether that's a engineering news record index or CPI or something. They, they try to account for the change in construction costs because all these are typically related to capital projects, but ultimately you have to revisit these fees every five to seven years typically. And you do that when there are significant changes in your environment, whether that's your capital project plan and/or your population estimates, which I think in this case, many of the agencies have had to go through updating their housing elements. And so you want to account for those new potential populations that you're zoning for and make sure that your fee is reflective and your projects are reflective of the improvements that are going to have to be done to support that new population.
That is correct. Yeah. So for the, based on the current NEXIS study, the guidance is that we use the construction cost index data. And that is something that gets updated every year. This year, I think we will be bringing that item for council update next month that's coming up. So for example, so this year is actually, the fee is going down a little bit by, I do not remember the exact value, but because of, it, it's based on how much the CCI adjusts itself on a certain month in a year. So there's one time where actually because of the recent inflation, we are actually having a negative impact. So the fees are actually going slightly lower, very.
Okay. But the NEXIS study is a different thing, right? We're redoing the NEXIS study and that we don't have, do you know when we'll have the results of that? Did you say in the next month or two?
No, no, that, that is, the committee will be reviewing that. So staff will, yeah. The LFFA will get input from staff and our understanding at this point is we will likely have an outside consultant brought in. That'll be the first step. And then they'll work with staff and the committee to update the study.
And historically have, when we've redone the NEXIS study, has it usually resulted in the fees increasing in that transportation impact fee? Do you know?
I do not have enough background.
I mean, the fee is ultimately a function of how many projects you're loading into the fee program, right?
Got it.
So if you're keeping your program, your fee is the same, maybe you've gotten some grant funding to offset some of the capital costs, you potentially could see it go down. I'm not very familiar with a lot of fee programs that go down over time. They typically increase over time because there's usually more projects you start adding into your fee program.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Only just that it seemed like the city manager had covered park and transportation. Do you have any comments on the development fee?
On which one? I'm sorry. The drainage?
No, the development fee was one of the three that we addressed. You talked about the first two, but there's been no, you didn't address the development fee, NEXIS study update potentially, or any potential changes to the development impact fee?
I saw three here that which all in their totality are development impact fees, right? So the park dedication fee, drainage impact fee and transportation impact fee. Am I missing, are there any other fees that we're charging? Those are the three that we charge as part of the sum of the development impact fees.
Got it. Yeah. Thanks.
Yeah. And city manager, what's your recommendation on whether or not we should get a new NEXIS study?
So you typically want new studies done every five to seven years unless you have in that intervening period of time, any major changes.
But it's been seven years, right?
So, yes, so LFFA is going to be updating and doing a new NEXIS study.
We are doing that.
That is correct. They are working towards getting an update done for the, for the transportation impact fee. The park dedication fee doesn't necessarily need it because it's based on land value. So I guess the only other one we would need to consider is the drainage impact fee. And Siva, I don't know when the last time was we did an update on the drainage impact fee, but you might know. And I don't know how substantial that fee is. I apologize. I, I could look that up and find out.
Yeah, no, sorry. At least not since I've been here, at least not in the last five years, but.
We'll take a look at that.
Public Works has more background on that and.
Does the transportation fee include the wear and tear on the roads from our haulers? No. Which, which fee is that?
That's the vehicle impact fee that's associated with the recycle smart program.
But that doesn't come into this section?
No.
But the, the NEXIS study can help, can focus on that as well, can't it?
So, yeah, typically when those, that fee tries to get adjusted, they will conduct some sort of NEXIS analysis. It takes a slightly different form. It talks about impact that those vehicles have on the roads and what impact that has on the asphalt and.
But would it make sense to do both at the same time?
These fees and that fee, it doesn't, they don't have to be connected, no. No, because this, the impact fees that he's charging are not for repair to existing roadways and the fee that you're referring to is about repair and it's not subject to AB 1600 rules.
Okay. But I think it's been, you know, seven years or so since we did it for vehicle.
Yes, and we will be doing it again as part of, in terms of the recycle smart conversation. So that will be happening. I believe David said that that's scheduled to be evaluated next year, in 2026.
Okay.
I think the concern there though, is that it may be going the wrong way. That's a big part of why we haven't pushed any harder on that because one of the components of the garbage gym pact is the amount of money you're spending on capital projects. And because we repaired all the roads, our expenditures have gone down. So I think there's some concern that a new NEXIS study on that is not going to be in our favor.
Any other discussion on item F3? Thank you, city engineer, for filling in and.
If he wants to stay up there.
I'm told you might want to stay close for their next item. Okay. So that concludes our discussion of F3. And moving on, also from, we will move on to item F6, which is to accept work and approve record plans for the San Pablo Creek Culvert Repair Project. And city project number 4187 and authorize the city clerk to sign and file a notice of completion with the Contra Costa County Clerk Recorder. And the recommendation is to adopt a resolution number 225 to accept that work and approve those plans. With that, do we want to have a staff report? Or are there questions from the council?
I just had a comment. So if council member G wants to go first, I, I just had a quick.
Yeah, I, I just had a comment too. The reason I wanted to pull this is.
Before comment, can I just see if there's any public comment? I don't have any cards for item F6, but I just, is there any member of the public here who would like to speak on item F6? Okay. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Council member G?
Yeah. I just wanted to pull it, this item, Siva, for you and Scott and the department because I, I'm not sure how often people realize how rare it is to have a public works project that not only comes in on budget, but slightly under budget. And I, and I know that, to me, this was a, a job of very, very good proactive planning by what you had in the documents, you know, making provision for things, which part of the reason the price went down is you didn't need to use it. So that showed, you know, good forward thinking, but, but I think it's important. I think it's important to call out and let our residents know on occasion, what a good job, you know, we are doing and delivering things and how, how good of stewards that we're being with the money. So I just wanted to take the moment to, to compliment all of you because bringing a project in, you know, on budget and even slightly under budget is really to be commended because it is, as you know, not a common occurrence in the public works world. The first thing that usually happens on day one of any public works project is something is different than what, what was expected. So it's very hard to do. So I just wanted to say thank you and, and commend you for doing such a good job.
Thank you.
Well, and I had the exact same comment, except I quantified it because I am always so jaded when I see a 20% contingency and I'm always think, you know, it seems like the numbers are always padded, construction costs always go up. And you brought this in, 60,000 under the quote, plus you used none of the contingency for a collective savings of $366,000 of taxpayer money that we can now use on other stuff. So I'm just so grateful that you guys were so respectful of taxpayer money to, to save money every chance you got and to not use the contingency. So thank you.
Thank you. I can't take too much credit for this. I'm standing here.
All the credit.
The team behind, the team behind me is already, we had some amazing staff actually who are very, like you said, council member, they were very proactive because this project actually involved a lot of easements that we had to secure. There were a lot of strategies that were put in place and time spent ahead of time before we got into construction, along with a good contractor too. I should credit the contractor too. They were very willing to work with us, very ahead of like their schedule and kept to their word. So everything came into place. So thank you so much for the appreciation.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank, thank you, council member G and vice mayor Iverson for the recognition. I think it's very well deserved and it's important to, you know, to recognize when the planes land well, not just when we have something that goes, goes away, we don't want it. Any other discussion on item F6? Okay. And so in that case, do we have a motion to adopt resolution number 225 to accept the work and approve record plans for the San Pablo Creek Culvert Repair Project as stated in the agenda?
I'll move approval of resolution 02-25.
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that vote is unanimous. And the city clerk reminded me that I did not call for a vote on item F3, so I'd like to go back and do that. And the recommendation is to receive and file the City of Aranda Annual Report of Development Impact Fee Funds for the year ended June 30, 2024. Do I have a motion to do that? So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that also passes unanimously. Next, that moves us on to item G, which is public hearing. And since there are no public hearing items tonight, that moves us right into our policy The first policy matter is H1, which is the final design concept for Crossroads Park, CIP project number 4103 and related actions. And so I will ask for the staff report.
Honorable mayor, we're going to turn it over to Todd Trimble. He's going, our parks director will be taking this item tonight for the team.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, for the record, Todd Trimble, Parks and Recreation Director. I know I'm not alone completely for sure. We have, Eric is here from Gates and Associates and Scott is, I think, on Zoom as well to answer any questions.
And just make sure that we can all hear you, just lean a little bit more into that microphone so our whole audience can hear you. Thank you, Director.
Check one, two.
Right.
Michelle, you hear me? Okay. Well, we have, we don't have a specific outline tonight. What we have is a, a series of visuals that we can reference and look at as needed. What we're, we're just going to briefly go through. You recall a couple of meetings ago, we had this item on and we didn't have time to get to it. So I'm just going to go back and kind of briefly bring this up to speed. And I don't have to say that, you know, we've been talking about this project for, for a long time. Eric's even been dealing with it longer than, than I have. But at the previous meeting, we did talk about the, what we're calling the baseline plan. We looked at that, which was going to be basically just a little bit of removal of some hardscape with no replacement, a little bit of adding of, of landscaping and, and the gateway sign. We brought that up. We had some discussions. We looked at it again and the recommendation was to go back and come back with a more expanded landscape plan, similar to the original concept several years ago. Continue with the removal and non-replacement of that portion of the sidewalk there you see in green and then do the complete replacement and removal and replacement of the irrigation and the landscaping, including even the original design included some screening trees along, along the back. There are approximately 10 to 14 trees along the back side there and no, no changes at that point to the, the hardscape. So that's where we, we landed. And so we brought it back now. We also had some discussion regarding the, the sign and the original fin design that you had, we had looked at. We looked at a variety of, kind of kept you going through the, the years of different options that were looked at and presented. And most recent meeting, the preference or the recommendation was to look at the, the fin sign. So we're back to kind of answer any questions. We can go through and verify and confirm the, the, the concept of this, this most recent design and then answer any questions you might have about the sign or, or things along those, like funding and so on. So we also have a couple of members of the Aranda Garden Club, in addition to Janet, here today to answer any, some questions you may have regarding that. So unless there's anything Linda would like to add.
Yeah, I would just, first of all, thank you, Todd, for the summary overview. I, I think one of the things we wanted to try and address between the last meeting when it got continued and now is really try to get the commitments sort of solidified from the, from the two groups that have expressed interest. The Aranda Community Foundation, which has committed funding, and then the Garden Club. And I think that conversation with the Garden Club sort of started to evolve and expand some, and we wanted to see about them getting more engaged in this process and having them be a partner in helping us with the plant selection for this area. And of course, anyone who drives out there can see that most of that landscaping has reached the end of its useful life and needs to be replaced in its entirety. It would really help to do that and, and do so in partnership with the Garden Club, working with Gates on trying to, you know, cite the plants and select those plant materials. And then of course, on the sign design itself, you know, that was, you know, that's gone through many iterations. There's certainly members in the community who would like to talk about it as a piece of public art. That's certainly an option for the council to consider. I think in the staff report, we just wanted to note that if you do want to go down that path, I think that is a different process and we can sort of have a placeholder there for when we can get to moving forward with a public art piece, if that's so what you desire. In the meantime, you know, we can still look at moving forward with a gateway monument feature. If, if the sort of shape of the sign is satisfactory to the city council, we can sort of look at that. But if you're interested in changing perhaps the color of the concrete or the fonts that are being used, we can, we can dabble around a little bit more with that and come back to you with other options. But we wanted to make sure we were bringing you something that was a little bit more comprehensive. We have commitments now. We've talked with the Garden Club and I know that they really want to help put this project together. And I think for those that might be here representing them, if they want to come up and talk a little bit about that, we'd certainly appreciate it. And we look forward to putting this to bed sooner rather than later. And I'm sure you don't disagree with me because we've been talking about it for quite some time. And we can try and move on to the next step of getting, making this happen. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Okay. Council questions? I know that we got some, so council member G?
I have one question, Todd. Can you, because I keep forgetting to look. Is the fountain intended to operate? Is it back to operating?
It's, fountain has been operating for a few months. Yes.
And it's intended to, A, operating as part of this plan, right?
Yes. No change to the hardscape, including the fountain.
Is there a safety reason for removing the sidewalk there? Is that just beautification?
I think it's a combination of, of safety, visibility. It's always been PG&E's intent as well to do whatever we can to kind of ensure just straight traversing through that area and not lingering and, and stuff, even though maybe taking it down from two, there's two pathways through there, you might know. So I think it was more of, I think on our end, more of a visibility aspect to remove the sidewalk that would be in front of the gateway sign and have just better overall sight too.
Okay. Other, other questions about this?
I was still trying to understand the costs. So is the cost projection, that $317,000 estimate for the sign and the concrete removal and new plants? And is, is that the total cost of the project? And what we are understanding is that a $50,000 donation would go towards that. What about donations of plant materials? Would that reduce this cost at all? of plant materials? Would that reduce this cost at all?
There's potential for, for both of those. Um, unless Scott corrects me, that's, that is the, the estimate of, of the design and construction. And it does not include there the, you know, the, uh, potential donations and in-kind types of services that could be, that could come later.
And this hundred and twenty thousand dollar for signage, that includes this gateway sign, would the mosaic sign be more than this gateway sign?
We don't have an estimate on what the public art sign would cost at this point, but presumably, I believe in the original submittal that the artist made, she referenced her sign being fifty thousand, but that didn't take into account the structural components that would then support the sign and any engineering work, that soft costs that would go along with that. So.
And so this would come out of the city's, um, what, what budget of the city's, would the money to do this come from?
Uh, this would come out of budget fund seven hundred. Uh, and I think Doug could be more, probably better suited to discuss its general fund dollars.
Yeah, I think there is a CIP. I'm sure the city manager's correct there.
So there's already a capital improvement project that has assumed a certain amount of funding. We're obviously seeking additional funding so that we can complete the project. Uh, the revenue that we would receive from either the Arinda Community Foundation or the in-kind costs associated with the planting, select, you know, the actual plants, uh, would come and we would book that as a revenue against the expenses. So we would still say that the expense that we're showing in this report is the expense we're expected to make, but we would have offsetting revenue that would then, um.
And how much has been set aside in the capital improvement project budget for this item? I'll let Todd answer the question.
That's, I'm sorry.
I could answer that, Todd. This is Scott, if, if you'd like.
Sure thing, Scott. Yeah, you have it.
Come on in, Scott.
Okay. Good, good evening, city council. So the, the current budget does have this available balance of a hundred and six thousand, which includes the presumption of fifty thousand from the Arinda Community Foundation. So that's, if you look at the table reflected as that available balance is a hundred and six thousand. So if you take that away from the estimated cost to complete of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, that's where we come up with this shortfall of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand. And the source of that money could either be completely from fund seven hundred, the CIP project fund, which, which is appropriated each year. Typically, there's a contribution that we recommend, and it's usually from the general fund, in fact, is where it comes from. And that then would be reduced further from any donation we, we get or commitment we get from the Garden Club, or perhaps additional donations from the OCF, from the Arinda Community Foundation, or as, as was brought up, possible in-kind plan contributions. So, so the worst case would be that entire amount would come from the city's CIP fund number seven hundred, the Capital Improvement Project Fund.
So, sure. Um, Scott, I'm a little bit confused because I thought the one oh six, um, did not include any of our, uh, private donation groups, but it sounds like you just said the commitment for fifty from the Community Foundation is inside the one oh six, but the other ones, the Garden Club and other groups would be outside it? Did I hear that correctly?
That's correct. Yeah, it does include the fifty thousand, which we don't have it in pockets, so to speak, but we, we have confirmed that commitment. And we had in the past, which is why we kind of inked it in as a donation. The, the portion from the Community Foundation that may possibly come about is if they decide to increase their donation, which they weren't willing to commit to based on Todd's most recent conversation with them.
Okay. So, I'm sorry. Any other questions?
Okay. So, so it seems like a hundred and twenty thousand of the two hundred and fifty-seven thousand shortfall is the sign itself, not the, um, rest of the work. Is there any way to do the sign in a less expensive way?
That's a Scott question. Scott, do you have any?
Well, there's always ways to reduce costs for things like signage. Um, you know, we could do a really bare bone sign, but based on the council meeting back in October, you know, there was a pretty great interest in the signage as kind of the central part of the project was really at that point in time, the signage was the key thing, even more so than the landscaping. Now, you know, I realize as, as people digest this project more, that, that sentiment may have changed, it seems to. Again, the, the hundred and thousand dollars includes the foundation and the, the wall itself that the sign would be kind of made into, even with the, what we consider the least costly sign option being the so-called fin design that we depicted in the, in the slides there, so to speak. So I mean, you know, that, that could be reduced some with a less complex sign. Um, you know, that, that's not a very elaborate sign, but I mean, there's ways to make it less costly. I don't know how much you'd save. And, you know, Eric might even be able to speak to that a little further. I know that Gates and Associates has pretty, I'd say extensive experience in monument signage like that. I, I believe they may have done one for possibly Pittsburgh within the last few years. So, um, if, if you like, Eric might speak to that more.
I mean, the short answer is yeah, you can always do something cheaper. It's just the question of, you know, what's going to be deemed acceptable and what do you guys want? For a sign of roughly that scale, I don't think you could get it for much less than say fifty, sixty thousand. Obviously, depending on the materials of this, we are going to be somewhat limited in what the materials are because of the overhead transmission lines. Uh, basically no metal. Other materials would be optional. Um, so yes, but we would just need to understand what do you guys want?
One thing that it appeared to me from the communications from the artist was that if the art, if the prior, um, estimate of the mosaic sign was at a hundred and seventy thousand, and the artist wrote an email saying that is not my estimate, it's a hundred and twenty thousand more, then my understanding is that the approximate, again, we don't have an exact estimate, but the approximate difference between a fin-like sign or the estimate in this budget, which includes only foundation and wall, and the mosaic sign would be about fifty thousand more to do a mosaic sign? Is that a fair assumption?
I wasn't a hundred percent clear on the quote from there. I say exactly what that entail was. So when we had, uh, a couple of months ago, when he provided several options for signs, I kicked that to a sign company. So, you know, hey, rough costs, how much would it, you know, would it cost for you guys to build these different types of walls? One of them being, um, one of these walls with a mosaic option, kind of, kind of by the artist, right? And so we put that fifty thousand on top of what the sign manufacturer would put together. Now, how those two melded together was not a hundred percent clear to me.
Okay. Um, any, I have one more question, but are there any other questions from my colleagues? Um, so my other question is, I assume that the plantings and the sign, that the plantings will be fire savvy in, in a, consistent with the plants for a fire savvy landscape that the Garden Club developed, and that the, um, sign would also be, uh, of materials and that in generating this is something we're talking to Chief Isaacs about, or a MOFT?
Yeah, I believe that the sign would be constructed of some concrete material, which would be.
Yeah, almost. I mean, almost a hundred percent, it would probably be concrete.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Um, if that concludes the staff report, then I'll move into public comment. And, um, for item H one, we have Mr. Warrenoff.
Did any of you actually read the stuff that was submitted? Did you read, uh, Judd Hammond's submission where he said the council needs to distinguish between the really nice and the really critical? Have you sat through this meeting? We had this gentleman in the back begging for some leadership on public safety. We had Sunil Rajaraman explaining the three aspects of the community-wide concern about wildfire. You heard from me. And we're spending all this time, month after month, on, on something that's of only of interest to some landscape architects and some bureaucrats. Nobody gives a rat's behind about this park. Nobody walks through there. The only people who see it are the two cars stopped in front when the light is red. I mean, I, I, I've been through there. You've got the new no right turn on red sign that if you're an older person blinds you, ten thousand dollars on that sign. You know how that got installed? Because someone said at a TSAC meeting that he saw a near collision, and the next thing you know, the city's spending ten thousand dollars on that. I can't believe this is funded in the CIP with all the important unfunded stuff in there. There's a saying you all, you all have heard, don't throw good money after bad. Put a lid on this. You've got a sign already there. You've got whatever's there. Let's talk about and spend some money on something important instead of wasting time and city money on this. This is an absolute disgrace. We are in an existential crisis, and you're worried about whether there's some mosaic on some sign? Folks ought to be embarrassed and ashamed of yourself, yourselves collectively.
Okay. Is there any, I do not see any other speaker cards for this item. Um, are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on that?
Thank you.
Michael Brown, correct? I'm just identifying further. Thank you.
So Nick's, I'm not going to add to his, um, passionate, uh, comments on this particular thing, but personally, I guess I have a couple of thoughts that I don't know if anybody's brought up before, but, um, I, I, I do think I've walked through that park. It's miserable. I don't think there's anything you do to make it not miserable with everything that's around it. It, it is, unless you're going to take out Camino Pablo, the exit from the freeway, the power lines and the stoplight, it's never going to be anything but a miserable patch of dirt. And I'd like having a sign for Arinda, but I think you need to consider a sign that's disposable because the likelihood of a car coming through there and putting a giant dent in our hundred and twenty thousand dollar sign that says welcome to Arinda, I mean, there's almost a hundred percent likelihood of that happening. So I, I definitely think you need to consider that any money that you spend on this park is disposable, and you can replace it tomorrow like that, and it won't be a bother to you because it's going to happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, do we have any other public comment on item H one, the Crossroads Mini Park? Seeing none, I will close public comment. I will note for the record that we did get, receive, um, several written items of public comment, some that are in the communications packet and some that were received after.
Can I ask another question?
Is it too late? Nope. Um, well, I'll open it up for discussion amongst my colleagues and, uh, council member Roxy.
So what could we do with the Garden Club's help and the fifty thousand dollar donation to beautify that corner? Because it does look kind of ugly right now, but not actually spend additional resources of the city. Is that possible? Perhaps it wouldn't involve a big sign. I do worry about that sign sticking out too close to the roadway, and it could be hit. I agree with Mr. Brown. Um, and it's also not that easy to see. It's, I, I don't, is there, is there some other way to achieve the benefit of improving that corner without spending additional city resources?
So, does anyone want, there is, there is a somewhat of a long history of trying to, uh, upgrade this, uh, mini park that goes back, I think, precedes even most of us here on the council in that it, that years ago, there was, there was funding donated and, or anticipated. And, um, I think there's a sense that, you know, we, we, this has been pending for so long. So I guess what I'm saying is the question you're asking now is sort of questions that, that I think have been revisited in the past. And after a lot of studies, it seems like it's, it's really come down to there isn't really a way to do this. We either have to do it or not. Like, we can't just, if we do it cheap, it's, it's not going to look good. If you go there and, you know, I walked through there this weekend in anticipation of this, and the, the landscaping is, a lot of it's dying. It looks really bad, you know? So, I mean, it does have to be upgraded, and, and these are the funds. We've gotten so many estimates on this, and so this is where it sort of landed at. I don't know if anyone else wants to chime in on that.
I guess I would say that it's been around long enough that we actually have reduced the potential investment in it quite substantially. So, um, I mean, we can certainly, um, continue along the lines of do nothing, but the reality is, is, um, we're not going to get a whole lot for, I mean, we're, we've already downsized it significantly, and we took so long that we, actually, the Community Foundation was going to invest two hundred and fifty thousand in it and pulled the money away. We waited so long. So.
That's unfortunate.
Yes, very unfortunate.
Yeah. I, I feel hopeful that there's more money out there, that, um, I mean, just look at our two, uh, light up Arinda fundraisers. I mean, they put together a lot of money very quickly for a community cause. And if there is that similar effort where somebody or, or lots of people are joining together, the Garden Club, we haven't mentioned Rotary. I mean, we should be approaching Rotary as well as the Community Foundation. So, and then the private money, um, Carol and, um, Kim got tons of private money. So not, you know, organizational money. So I feel like there's more out there. Uh, if we set up this program or project as it is, where donations come in later and reduces the actual costs in the end, I mean, it's a scary number right now, but if you bring in a couple hundred thousand dollars over maybe a couple of years, maybe it doesn't come in the next few months. You're, you're looking good. It's a reasonable cost. And then the other approaches, uh, that I'm thinking of is a phased-in approach. Um, or, and I don't know how this, you'd have to talk to the architect, how you do that, where, where do you start? Do you start in the front? Or do you start in the back? You know, what, what is it that's going to, um, I don't know, make, make a difference initially? Because I think this all has been, uh, people have been unhappy about the way it looks because they took away the, the screen of the building. It, it's really ugly to look at, and it's where we enter our city. It's the gateway. So maybe you put in the trees first so that you start growing your trees to shield the buildings. I don't know. Those are just my thoughts. We could phase in it. We can get more money. We can find some big dynamo fundraisers to help us coordinate several, uh, sources out there.
Other comments?
I, I would agree with council member Riley. I do think there's probably more private money that would be willing to donate. What I would love to see happen is with the Garden Club's assistance, to me, this could be like really what you said, Madam Mayor, is we need to use our fire savvy plants. We need to make it like a demonstration garden. I would love to see the plants that could be the most blooming, the most beautiful. Um, and again, just, it's just, it's not really a park. It's a focal point. I do think the trees are important because the screening has really what been the massive thing that's changed that corner. On the sign, I would, I would. On the sign, I would, I would suggest, and I don't know if this is possible, an awful lot of the public art in this community has been donated. I don't know if there's a way that part of the cost of having a better sign than what's out there would be, you know, that perhaps there's somebody in the artistic community that would want to contribute part of it in some way, shape, or form. I don't know. And I don't know if that's what our Parks and Rec and Urban Art Committees were considering or not, but I'd be open to, you know, to thinking about that. I don't think, I completely hear what people are saying. It's certainly very, very important that we focus on a lot of key things that we're going to be talking about when it comes to evacuation, fire, all the things the community's very, very focused on and rightfully so. But that doesn't mean that we drop every single other aspect of our community. And I think finishing this off, and I think what's out there right now does look particularly sad and, you know, and quite frankly, going to almost every community in the county, we are about the only community that doesn't have a fairly decent gateway. Even communities that would be considered, you know, substantially different from Arinda have much, much better-looking gateways to their community. It's always, it's always been a real sore spot with me that we seem to have so little civic pride in that area. So I certainly think doing the landscaping part, really using it as a great demonstration of what can be done landscaping-wise, and then maybe evaluating whether there are options for the sign. So I don't think the, I think the sign, I would like to see something nice, but, you know, and I, and I do think that Councilmember Riley's correct. I mean, when I look at, at how much money was amassed so quickly over the Light Up Arinda, you know, I'd be hopeful that, you know, as much as the community is very focused on very important issues, more important issues than focal points, still, I think there's some desire to have our community be a nice-looking place, so.
Councilmember Riley?
Can we talk a little bit more about the public art challenge and the, you know, the issues that come down the road if we use an artist?
Sure. So I think one of the things that in communities that want to use public art in very visible places has to consider is that there's intellectual property rights that the artists would maintain. So if, you know, you ever wanted to change anything about it, you'd have to go through a process with the artist to, to figure out any modifications to that piece of art. The maintenance of those pieces of art typically has to engage and involve the artist on an ongoing basis. So you need to make sure you keep connected with the artist over time and, you know, sometimes artists leave the area, they move to different countries, and then you're trying to track them down to get their involvement in the maintenance of it.
Is it possible, though, that, that you can have an agreement where they, they sort of relinquish that to you or whatever?
There we go. Yes, you can, but there are limits, right? So as an example, you couldn't change the look of it in a way that the artist would disagree with, right? That would misrepresent their artistic vision. So it can all be contracted through, it's just more complicated. The other thing that I think the city manager is probably about to say is that it's appropriate to do a competitive process. Typically, that's what's done in situations like this and we haven't had that process yet.
Okay. Sorry, oh, go ahead.
By the way, we're with the public comment or are we doing our conversation?
Yeah, I think we're doing our conversation.
I'd love to just say a momentary word about the art question because I, it's one I've given a lot of thought to. I thought the letter from the artist that we got after our last meeting was, was really impactful. She made a lot of good points. I spent a lot of time looking at her whole portfolio and thinking about the points that she made and the art and the, the direction that she was specifically given. But as we've now have gone through the process, I have come to the conclusion that this is not the appropriate occasion for a public art piece. I actually love our Art in Public Places Committee. I think they've made public art a signature feature of the Arinda community and so it's, there would be a reason why we would make an exception and have a piece of public art, but this is our, it's our monument. It's just our sign. It is not, I don't think, the right place for art and especially not to try to get something donated where there's even less creative control. I'm fine with something that is classic and timeless and just does the job of a sign. I think we're in the right direction and I really like what was presented. And I'd be thrilled if the mosaic that was presented by the artist shows up somewhere like a community park. I thought it was beautiful. I just thought that a mosaic was not the right thing for our front door.
And, okay, go ahead.
The only thing I would, I actually have no problem with this sign except one thing, and that is, I don't think the contrast between the, the color of the metal and the brown background. I'd want the, I'd want it to have more contrast so that it stands out more.
Right. It's hard to see. And I am concerned about the length of the sign and how close it is to the street from a safety perspective.
And then, go ahead.
No, I was, just, all those things could be discussed as part of bringing back a few different alternatives, but getting directions here tonight as to what you'd like to see different about what's being proposed as a gateway money would be very helpful and then we can come back with some tweaks to it.
Councilmember Hoxsey, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Well, I'm also concerned about staff time, right? As has been pointed out, there are lots of important things that we need to be working on, but I assume that those sorts of items would not take so much of your time, that you would not have enough time left over for the most important items.
The person that would be committed to doing this would be Gates and Associates primarily to come back with modifications, tweaks for you to consider.
And they wouldn't otherwise be working on fire safety.
They would not be working on other issues on the city's behalf.
Go ahead, Councilmember Riley?
I like, I like this sign when we first looked at it a few months ago and I still like it. I like the feel, but I would like to see alternative color backing and lettering. I'd like somebody to, you know, really question what's there and think about whether or not it pops, whether or not you can read it. Not sure, we're right on top of, you know, I'd like it to be a little louder. I feel like it's subtle and since it's a drive-by experience, it's not like I'm going to sit and look at this sign. I want to be able to read it really well, easily. And I can read Arinda, but I can't read what's above it.
And it says, "Welcome to..."
I know, I know, I know what it says, but you don't see.
Right. And I don't think that...
Maybe you don't need welcome. I mean, you're welcome to come, but not everyone's welcome.
Most of the, most of the designs did not include that. And again, that, that version, Scott, you know, was one of, way back in the beginning, we plopped it in this, the existing landscaping, right? I mean, all that would, would change. And I think to Councilmember Hoxsey's point too, the sidewalk, we feel that the, the sign is far enough back. It's certainly further back than any poles or signal poles or anything and it would, and it would be less inclined if you had a sidewalk there. We feel that more likely a car could pop the sidewalk and go onto it as opposed to having landscaping up to that point and, and not being confused with the, the street or sidewalk. I mean, it's, I don't even want to get back into the original location of the sign way back when, which was right on the corner between those signal poles and difficult to see. So, I mean, this is, I think like the city manager alluded to, I mean, you know, it's difficult, it is difficult to try to get a sense of it in this scenario with, you could see the existing scene on the right, plopped in the sign with the existing landscaping. All that would change, right? Theoretically with the, with new landscaping and lower landscaping and light it, uplighting and whatever colors and fonts and size of letters and all that.
Okay, so I, I had a couple comments on it. I am, first of all, thrilled about that the garden club is, is involved. I have great trust in their work based on sort of what's been done around the library and the Library Plaza and would love to see go all in actually with the idea of creating a fire-savvy plant landscape as a demonstration garden. I think that could have value in this community when we're trying to educate and promote culture change about what our relationship with our landscape and our yards and the aesthetics needs to look like. And, you know, to the extent we can incorporate even rocks or something like that, I think that would be great. And I, with regard to the sign, I do want to just sort of acknowledge and recognize the work over many, many years that our Parks and Rec Commission put in and our Art in Public Places Committee put in. And we did get some, you know, communications that came in after the, this communications from the public packet was able to be developed, but, you know, from a couple folks on our commission, including, you know, I think our chair, still our chair, I don't know if she's still our chair, but Erin Schultz and also Steve Danziger, who I know both spent a lot of time working on this. And, you know, one of the suggestions was to get the feedback and get the feedback on the sign, but also not completely close the door on what the sign was. And that, I think, is sort of my view for a couple reasons. One is, I don't love this sort of demo of the fin sign and, and I recognize, we haven't seen other colors and what, you know, you can do a lot with concrete, but I do like the idea of the mosaic. I also looked at that artist's, you know, renditions and I think it, it could be really beautiful. And so I, I do sort of recognize the work of that committee and commission in putting that forth and perhaps what sign we go with in terms of additional cost will in part be, that decision may in part be made, or I'm proposing it might be made, based on how much we can raise from the community, right? How much community funding and whether we can, we can make up the shortfall that's needed through donations. I am also optimistic that a lot of folks in our community will donate. People donated to Light Up Arinda, people donated, you know, a few years ago to an effort to provide meals for essential workers. And so we have had a couple fundraising drives in our community that have resulted in sizable donations quickly. And so I'm optimistic that if this allocation is made, that that will happen, that our, that, you know, this has been pending for so long, I feel like if we make this allocation, we will, it will move forward. But, so I guess the direction, I would, I would be willing to vote for this in favor but the, with the direction that we really should try to launch, you know, widespread community fundraising effort to the extent we can to try to make up part of that shortfall.
Yeah. So I'm totally in favor of asking for more money from the community, but I think we've learned that we've got to have the program or the project launched. We can't just let 200,000 sit on the books from the Arinda Community Foundation because they walked away because they think, why would I give money to a group that's not going to do anything? So you got to get started and then the people will come and will support it.
Okay. And I agree with that. I think that I'm anticipating fundraising quickly and getting this done. We need this done.
We need to approve and go and then ask.
My only concern is fundraising takes someone who actually is in charge of doing it. And so I would worry about whose responsibility it would be to do that fundraising.
I would just say that I would be electing Todd to take that lead. Todd would be taking that lead on helping to figure out, and I would, Todd and I would sit down and talk about, if it's the consensus of the council that you want us to pursue additional opportunities with the community to fundraise for this project, we could look, put our heads together and figure out different ways in which we could potentially raise funds for the project.
Including calling up Carol Brevelli and Kim Robb.
It's an excellent start.
They, they would be helpful.
And I'm sorry, there's one other comment I want to make in discussion of this, which is that, just to echo Councilmember Gee's comments to, to those of you who are understandably and rightfully very, very concerned about emergency preparedness and evacuation and, you know, wildfire mitigation efforts, talking about this park is not mutually exclusive from addressing those issues, okay? And I want to thank everyone who's made, you know, there's some very thoughtful ideas that have been expressed here and that have been expressed to all of us. We've gotten, I think all of us have gotten a lot of public comment. I've spent probably a good 40 hours plus each week over the last couple of weeks discussing these issues with folks. And it's not on our agenda tonight, so I'm not going to go into it anymore. Our city attorney will tell me to be quiet. But, but your concerns, your worries, your suggestions are being heard and listened by all of us. And, and we're, you know, we are acting on them and some has been acted and needs to be communicated and some anyhow. So I just wanted to sort of put that out there to reassure folks.
I'm confused because I thought part of this spirit of moving this forward was narrowing issues and giving direction so that we can get this project on a process. But you had made a comment that you wanted to go back to the art versus monument question. I was prepared to say I fully support this being a monumented sign that Gates works on and comes back with some treatments of a monumented sign that Gates does. If you want to go back to the art process, I think we should get consensus or figure that out because I do think that one of the requests tonight was for us to give a consensus direction. And I think you and I might be having a difference of opinion.
Okay. I mean, I, I think I prefer the, the art process and the mosaic sign, but that's because of what we're looking at in this light rendition. So I just can't say I like it, but I'm also, don't have strong feelings on that. I'd like to hear from everyone. I mean, I'm not saying we can't reach consensus.
I'm most concerned about cost. I haven't been part of this process for the past few years, so I'm, I'm new to it. I hear loud and clear the concerns of our community and I do like the idea of a demonstration garden that can show people the firewise plants that we can use in our community safely and that look nice. I do think it is important that we not have a dead, you know, sort of entrance to the city that really doesn't look very nice. And on the other hand, I don't want to spend city resources to achieve that. I'm very concerned that we need to put our city resources towards safety and other issues that are facing our city.
So in terms of where are you on the sign for that, for council?
Because of the cost, I would go with the sign as a monument sign because I think it will be less expensive and serve the purpose of telling people where they are when they get off the freeway.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with moving forward with the monument sign with some options that I think would be perhaps better contrast or more attractive, you know, if, if we wanted to, you know, I, and part of my reasoning for that is not that I don't think the public art was, you know, beautiful or couldn't be a real showpiece or something like that, but given that this project has drug on for 12 years and we're concerned about costs and we're concerned about other priorities and all that, you know, I'm, I'm not that worried about the vehicular accident part of it, but the reality is, is I think it would simply be easier, more straightforward for the staff. You know, I think it could be made very attractive and we have a lot of other opportunities for public art in the community, so.
Okay. Anything else to add, Councilmember Riley? About the sign?
About the sign? I guess I'd like to ask if you have some suggestions right off the top of your head, what other colors we might see in the concrete?
I think the, the options are almost endless. I mean, some of you, from the 12 years, as Councilmember Gee said way before my time, I can count probably a half a dozen different iterations that we've gone through from the standing single letters to the, to the, the fin sign, to the, kind of the, the wavy hills kind of position, but...
Using this monument signs, what, what, what could you bring back? What colors would you bring back?
I think, and Eric could, could add to it, I think we would probably be looking at something with a lighter background and then a darker... I think we would probably be looking at something with a lighter background and then a darker, more visible letters type thing that's easy, easy to light, uplight in the evenings. And, I mean, that's, I'm certainly not a, an artist or a designer, but something, something like that. But there's really nothing limiting that.
Okay. I'm not wedded to the mosaic sign. I think we could reach consensus. I think we've spent enough time on this.
With a gateway monument sign and we'll go ahead and we'll take a look at some options to bring back at an upcoming meeting. We'll try to move through that very swiftly. And, you know, I'll even task staff to look at an option for a lesser expensive sign that you could consider as part of a monument sign in addition to color changes to the sign. Okay? Todd and I will work on future fundraising and a strategy for that.
Okay, thank you. And the item, the, the action item here was just to provide feedback.
There's a few, actually, there's a few action items on this one, including an approval for the contract amendments for Gates and Associates. I apologize, my computer.
Okay, so do we have a motion then to approve the revised design concept, the amendment number two to the contract with Gates and Associates, and approve budget change form number five dash 25?
So moved.
Okay, a second?
All seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
The motion passes for one. And I will call item H2, which is an overview of the Metropolitan Transportation Commission's Transit Oriented Communities Policy and Arinda's compliance status.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Darren Hughes is going to be presenting a report to you tonight on the TOC policy and related guidance that we're receiving from MTC.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council and members of the public. My name is Darren Hughes. I am an associate planner in the planning department. So tonight I'm going to be going over the Metropolitan, Metropolitan Transportation Communit- excuse me, I'm sorry. The Metropolitan Transportation Commission, which I'll refer to as MTC here on Transit Oriented Communities. I'll refer to that as TOC policy. One thing that I do want to bring up right now at the very beginning of this is that MTC TOC policy is something that is a little bit more recent in association with the Plan Bay Area 2050 by MTC. There are, there's another term, PDA, the Priority Development Areas that Arinda was designated as in 2008 timeframe. This is some policy, it's kind of parallel to that and sort of taking over that. That was something that was opted in by many communities around station areas. This one automatically applies to station areas. And I will go over some of the, some of the potential requirements. Let's see, that is not the. Is it just this? Okay, thank you. Okay, so agenda for tonight, overview of the MTC TOC policy. And then I want to describe Arinda's status with the TOC policy and how we conform to it. One thing that I want to highlight at this particular point, TOC policy is fully elective. It is not something that we are actually required to conform to. We are going to have a lot of options as a community going forward and how we want to actually approach TOC policy. But this is an overview because we've got the administrative guidance from MTC in 2024. In September, they released that particular guidance, which gave us a lot more information on what types of policies they're looking at and how they're looking at this. I will reference the Downtown Precise Plan and the Objective Design Standards at certain points tonight. I want to reiterate that the Downtown Precise Plan is currently rescinded and the Objective Design Standards for the downtown were only ever adopted in draft format. So when I reference those, I'm basically talking about those as potential vehicles for carrying out some of the policies that we do see in this, that we will be bringing to City Council in future iterations in order to get some additional feedback and guidance. Tonight is just about giving you this information so that we can make some initial, we can look for some initial guidance and feedback on what policies staff might want to look into. All right, so the TOC overview, this was adopted by MTC to support the region's transit investments and advance the goals of Plan Bay Area 2050, which is the region's long range plan for transportation, housing, economy, and environment. TOC policy applies to the half mile area around existing and planned fixed guideway transit stops. So the Bart Station for Arinda. In these areas, the TOC policy establishes requirements related to four components, land use density, affordable housing, parking management, and complete streets and multi-modal access. So again, TOC policy compliance is fully voluntary. So why would Arinda want to be compliant with TOC policy? The two primary reasons for this would be, one, TOC, the guidance from MTC right now is that adherence to TOC policy and being found to be substantially compliant with TOC policy will make us more eligible for OABAG funding going forward. So that's one Bay Area grant funds that are handled regionally. So far, there have been three cycles for OABAG funds. We're about to go into the fourth cycle and get some additional guidance on the fourth cycle funding. And we have received OABAG funding in the past. But in order to maintain, maintain competitive status for this funding in the future, we would be looking at some form of compliance with TOC policy. The second reason is we are going to be implementing rezonings through the housing element in one way, shape, or form in the downtown area. The policies that are given as a toolkit within the TOC policy would ultimately help support increased densities and support policies and protections for residents that would be moving into Arinda in association with those, with those rezonings. Okay, so one Bay Area grant. Over the past three cycles, MTC, and these are four year cycles, MTC has distributed over 941 million. Arinda received just under 1.3 million directly and just under another 700,000 as part of a regional effort. I'll go over that on future slides. The next funding cycle is scheduled for 2026. And as stated, the consistency is going to be looked at, consistency with TOC policy is going to be looked at as a meaningful factor. This is a slide showing a graph breakdown that is provided by MTC at the moment to show exactly where we may stand at for, when we're applying for grant funding through OABAG funds. Noncompliant jurisdictions, so if the community were to opt to just say, we're not going to pursue compliance for this particular cycle, would still be potentially eligible for limited funds through OABAG grants. It's just that they would be very limited and we would be noncompetitive as compared to substantially compliant jurisdictions, which would be eligible for most funding. Compliant jurisdictions seems that OABAG, or seems that MTC expects that this will make up the smallest contingent of jurisdictions, would be eligible for all funding and there would be some set aside funding and additional funding sources for those jurisdictions. And then there are nonTOC jurisdictions that can also apply for these funds. They would be eligible for most funding. Likely they would be a little bit less, less competitive than substantially compliant jurisdictions. So past Arinda OABAG projects, we have received three, three different grants. The first two that are listed here in approximately 2015 timeframe, sidewalk improvements and street preservation for Ivy Drive. Those were received during the OABAG I cycle. And then the 2019 to 2020 Arinda Way Pavement Rehabilitation Funds were received through OABAG II cycle. No funds were received directly during OABAG III. This brings the total that we've received so far as a community to 1.27, or $1,272,000. Other funding sources, however, so in the third cycle, Arinda did receive $657,000 that was given to Arinda through CCTA's Smart Signals Project. So that was part of a regional effort that Arinda essentially had a slice of. I did talk today to a point of contact at MTC because I was curious about how TOC compliance could potentially affect this sort of funding, since it wasn't something that we had directly applied for. And the guidance that we got was that the TOC compliance was also going to be used to assess a community's access to funding even through regional projects like this. So these funds are also potentially subject to future TOC considerations. We also received technical assistance. This was as a PDA grant. And I had talked about PDAs before. One thing that I do want to point out is that all the guidance for PDAs now state that TOC compliance is also going to be a factor for any PDA grants. So if there's ever any distinction in the future between PDA grants and TOC grants, they're still going to be TOC compliant, they're going to have that requirement to be looked at. So that's another 857,000, bringing Arinda's total to approximately 2.1 million over the past about 10 years. So this is the TOC station area, just includes all of the downtown on the southeast side, on the village side, about half of the downtown, as well as the residential districts, which technically are within the PDA and are assessed. And we'll look at that a little bit on one of the upcoming slides. So the TOC compliance is broken down into four categories. There are density requirements, so minimum and maximum densities for housing and offices, affordable housing and commercial stabilization policies. There are four categories that we'll go over. From each of those categories, we would be expected to choose two particular policies, with the exception of the commercial stabilization policies, we would only need one from that. Parking management. This has a few different requirements, parking maximums and minimums, bicycle parking, shared parking, allowing unbundled parking, curb management, and looking at the various parking policies that we have in effect and how they could support better management. Transit station access and circulation is the fourth part. This is, we would show that we are compliant with this by showing what policies we have on the books and what we have been pursuing over the past couple of years to prioritize active transportation. And we'll go over all of these individual, I'm going to break them down on these next few slides. So the first one is the density requirements. So Arinda is the, each of the communities is tiered, one through four, with gradually decreasing requirements. Four would be for the smallest communities. Arinda is subject to tier three requirements for the purposes of commercial office densities. It's subject to tier four requirements because we have fewer than 30,000 people for the residential density requirements. So right now on what that requires of us, looking at the residential side of the house, is that we would need to push for 25 units per acre as a minimum requirement. So someone coming forward with a development would have to propose at least 25 units per acre. And this is an average across all of the districts. This is not something that is on any one specific project. This is just, we look at all of the different districts where we have potential for housing and have to average, make an average density requirement calculation across the board. It would be 35 units or more for the density maximum. Those are the numbers that we're used to seeing where we say, okay, we're proposing in the downtown rezonings, for instance, 25, 30, and 55 units per acre. We do also, as part of this calculation, have to take into account any single family residential rezoned parcels that have not yet been developed. And there are a few of those in Arinda. They overall do bring down the overall average that we could be pursuing. So status with those right now, we don't have any minimum densities on the books for maximum. If you do a calculation across all of the parcels that are eligible for this, right now we're estimating that we're at about 5.4 units per acre. So clearly much, very shy of that 35 plus units per acre. In this last column, I have the proposed Downtown Precise Plan standards. So these are the standards that if the downtown were rezoned in its entirety, this is approximately what we would see. So therefore moving towards that substantial compliance. The residential density minimums are set to 20, and that is a housing element program or a housing element action that's required. The residential density maximums would average to around 27. So it'd be about 29, except we have those single family residential undeveloped lots that are also pulling down this overall average. The commercial office density minimums, this is probably one of those categories based off of the various requirements that were listed by MTC in their TOC guidance that we may end up just having to forego. I don't think there are many staff recommendations to push towards building heights of 65 feet. Basically, these floor area ratios that are set are, you know, right now we are very not compliant. We have a minimum of two plus floor area ratio and we don't meet, we just have zero on the books. And for a commercial office density maximums, they're looking at four plus floor area ratio. What that would essentially mean is you have a lot and someone who has to develop on that can develop up to four times the, the overall area of that lot. And even with the Downtown Precise Plan standards, based off of the calculations that are offered within the TOC administrative guidance, we would only get to 1.5 floor area ratio. All right, so moving on into the policies, we have the first category. It's the production housing policies. So again, this is just simply a list of policies that Arinda has options to choose from. For the purposes of this report, staff has gone through and identified various policies on this page and the next few categories as well, that we are either already pursuing or would potentially be suitable for Arinda in order to pursue. So these are considerations that we have on the books right now. The production housing policies, there are two policies, policy one and policy five, that we are already working towards with the housing element. These are required actions. One is an inclusionary housing ordinance, and this would be requiring at least 15% affordability for new projects that are 10 plus units. So that is something that Arinda staff has already put out a request for proposal for the development of that ordinance. And we're evaluating right now the, the responses that we got for that. And then ministerial approval, this is also a housing element program, although it's slightly different. In the housing element, we're required to just ministerially approve without any sort of discretionary review or design review or conditional use permits, any housing projects that conform to the objective design standards and have at least a 20% affordability rate. In the MTC policy, that would be lowered to 15%, so there is a minor disparity there. So preservation housing policies. There are two policies here that are highlighted by staff. Policy two is tenant community opportunity to purchase. So that would provide tenants or mission driven nonprofits the right of first refusal to purchase a property at market rate price when offered for sale. And the second policy here that we've highlighted, condominium conversion restrictions, require that rental units converted to condominiums be replaced one to one with comparable rental units, unless they're purchased by current long-term tenants or converted to permanently affordable housing with protection for existing tenants. So these are policies that don't have a broad extent of applicability in the downtown right now. However, these are policies that we could, in theory, have on the books, whether we're pursuing TOC policy or not, in order to provide. in order to provide, to provide future protections to anyone who would become a resident of downtown. Moving on. So protection housing policies. Two here, there's highlighted legal assistance for tenants. So some of these policies do have a funding commitment that the city has to essentially state that it's going to be able to commit to for a four year O BAG cycle. In this particular case, the funding commitment would be two hundred thousand dollars for legal assistance. So policy three. This would be investments or programs that expand access to legal assistance for tenants facing displacement. Could range from a right to counsel to dedicated public funding for tenant legal assistance. This would also include eviction and pre eviction legal services for low income tenants. And then policy seven, so preventing displacement from substandard conditions and associated code enforcement activities. The, the portion of this that we're highlighting, that we're already essentially doing, establish an amnesty program to waive fines and fees for property owners with occupied units constructed without the proper permits in exchange for bringing the unit into compliance with health and safety codes. We don't have very many instances of this occurring. We've had one A D U that we had to go through this process with in the last year. But essentially, the way that Arinda staff currently processes applications or works with people who we find to have built something that's nonconforming or not permitted is we're, our goal is to just get those projects to legal status and to try to minimize barriers towards that. The portion that we will have to work with could potentially require a zoning amendment because right now Title fifteen does require the building department to double fees when someone is approaching them and has not secured the proper permits prior to performing the work. So in these instances, we would need to work with the building department in order to reduce those fees.
Darren, really quick on this item, just to confirm, the funding commitments are for a four year period of time, is that correct? Okay, so if you're talking about two hundred thousand, you're not talking about two hundred thousand annually, you're talking about two hundred thousand over a four year period.
Correct, correct. That is not, and that is not money that has to be spent and discarded by the city. That is simply funding that has to be set aside in order to fund the, that particular service for residents, should they choose to use that. So it's not something that ultimately we spend that two hundred thousand dollars and lose access to that. It could be rolled over and all of the rules about funding commitments that are highlighted in the administrative guidance do state that funds can be rolled over from previous cycles. Okay, and commercial stabilization policies. So these are related to small business. The one that basically the city is already doing is small business advocate office. So we would do a little bit of work in formalizing this and putting out information on the city website. But this is essentially handled through the associate planner position that I hold within the city as well as the city manager, Linda Smith. All right, moving on to parking policies. This table just breaks down what policies would be required for the city of Arinda. We are meeting virtually none of these. We have, I think it's been acknowledged in the past that the, the parking requirements that we have within the zoning code are a bit out of date and have been preventing some, some businesses from being able to open up in certain spaces for which we've had those fee holidays in the past applied to downtown. We also have, we're also facing, this is the T O C area, it's all within a half mile of the Bart station. So applicable within that half mile are the A B twenty ninety seven requirements that essentially make it so that the community can't require parking minimums within that half mile radius for all development projects with some minor exceptions, one of those being certain hospitality services such as hotels. But for the purposes of M T C T O C requirements, we would be looking at basically codifying the idea and this could happen within the O M C or within objective design standards for the downtown, codifying the the no minimums that are, we're currently subject to via A B twenty ninety seven. We would also be looking at maximum residential parking. So you could set maximums at up to one space per unit. So this is basically saying that if a developer were to come forward with twenty five units in a building, we could require, or they could propose a maximum of twenty five units in that particular case. And then that would be combined, if it were a mixed use building, that would be combined with the spaces that are required for commercial space. There are also minimum bicycle parking requirements and unbundled parking requirements. So unbundled parking requirements just means that we would have to allow developers who are renting out units to rent out parking spaces separately from that if they so chose to do so. So all of these, for the most part, are items that could be carried out through objective design standards, making simple updates within the, the draft O D S. Station access and circulation, this is the last component of this. Basically, we are on the hook for complying with all of this, should we pursue T O C compliance. One, adopt a jurisdiction wide complete streets policy. We do have that, that's required by state law. So that was last updated in twenty fourteen and remains compliant to today. Prioritize implementation of active transportation projects in the T O C areas. This is just showing a body of evidence that we have pursued these types of projects. There was an R M three grant that was recently applied, applied for to study a multimodal path along Maraga Way to connect south side of Arinda and Maraga to Arinda Bart. And then also preparing, the city's preparing a feasibility study for trail alignments, so connecting Wilder to the downtown via bike or pedestrian access trail. Third requirement here, complete an access gap analysis and capital improvement program for station access. We do have Connect Arinda twenty eighteen. We're not one hundred percent sure at this point whether that would be deemed compliant with this particular item and same for the next one. Identify mobility hub planning and implementation opportunities in T O C areas. So we have these policies, the bike trails and walkways master plan, which is going to be, I understand, undergoing an update in the near future. Connect Arinda and the rescinded downtown precise plan. These are documents that could be used to show that we have worked towards these particular goals, but we would want to explore if there were any further criteria that we would be subject to here. So just to recap, this is a fully elective set of policies. It is something that we are going to, as I said, be bringing back in future discussions, particularly around what is happening with the E I R and the downtown precise plan. Ultimately, this compliance would enable us to remain competitive for O BAG funding and technical assistance fundings. So today we are just looking to provide you this information and receive any initial feedback on these policies. And with that, I will turn that over. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, do you want to add anything else?
Real exciting stuff, isn't it? A lot of technical policies and of course, you know, our objective here is to ensure that we're still remaining competitive. We rely heavily in this community on grants to help fund improvements, particularly transportation improvements. And so to the extent that we can find ourselves to be compliant, we'd like to figure out a way to do that. And of course, the area that we pointed out where we don't feel like we're going to be able to find compliance is in that commercial office area. And I think for reference, a two point oh F A R means you're putting two stories on an entire parcel, covering it a hundred percent. Let's assume that you don't want to cover your property a hundred percent with building at two stories. Let's say you want to do half of yours property, you have to go to four stories. And let's say you don't want to cover your building, your property in fifty percent coverage, you want twenty five percent coverage, it means eight stories. And so those are, that's how a two point oh F A R is determined. So I'm just giving you context for that. That's not generally within the character of what you've got in your downtown area. And so I think that would be the most complicated one for us to try and figure out. But I think we've spent months now trying to come up with a plan for a way that we can best try to comply. And that's what you have in front of you today. And I give a lot of credit to Darren and LaShawn for working closely over the last several months, trying to figure out how to bring up this conversation because it's not an easy one to have. And of course, this dovetails somewhat to some extent with the downtown precise plan and figuring out if you do give us direction to try and find ways to comply, how do we reconcile those two things? And so I think we'll have to talk a little bit more about that as, as we move on here. But I wanted to just sort of frame it, thank staff for all that work and turn it over to the council for any questions or thoughts that you may have.
Sure, there's questions. Councilmember G.
I'll start. I recognize that this is, I, I want to reemphasize what you said, Darren, that the P D A designation has nothing to do with the T O C. If we somehow got rid of the P D A designation tomorrow, which I understand is maybe not that easy to do, it, it wouldn't matter in terms of this issue, right? They're not connected directly.
That is correct. They're not connected directly, except for the fact that both of them have this new components for funding.
I guess my next question is, is this is all relatively new, so it hasn't been all that implemented, correct? So one of the first questions that came to my mind, trying to digest all of it, was it's a lot like the housing element in the sense of what if you do enough somehow through some combination to quote substantially comply, then nothing happens because maybe nobody wants to build anything that fits into that category. Or maybe, as you mentioned, so many of those categories are very obviously San Francisco and Oakland oriented kinds of things. You know, we don't have a lot of rental disputes with, you know, disadvantaged people in Arinda and things like that. So some of those things, you know, would virtually, we could adopt them, but they would quote never come to pass. So one of the questions that comes to mind is what if you do it and it kind of never happens? Is there like any, I, I didn't find anything in their written document that says, oh, well, if you do this, but nothing happens in five years, then you're not compliant again or something like that. So I don't think there's any, there's nothing that, guidance for that?
Right, we don't have a ton of guidance on that. Like I stated with the twenty twenty or the upcoming O BAG four cycle, there are still a couple of things being worked out. We don't know what, for instance, in the past, we have this number eighty five percent compliance. So eighty five percent demonstrates substantial compliance. There's nothing that is a solid marker of what eighty five, eighty five percent means and it's going to ultimately be a case by case basis where M T C staff is probably looking at individual communities and trying to make a determination on, you know, how much effort they have put into this and where they're going with their compliance rating. And in terms of how that translates to future cycles, we don't know what that's going to look like ultimately. I don't think that, you know, setting up all of this for the next cycle is going to impact what we get for funding or what we can apply for, for funding for that cycle. I think the implications of what you're bringing up are going to be a little bit more important to consider on future cycles. But my general understanding is it's going to be somewhat similar to the housing element where a housing element ultimately is a vehicle to show that we have the capacity for additional units and, and we have actions that we are following through with. That doesn't necessarily mean that we're building those units. However, with T O C compliance, yes, it's, it's perfectly plausible that we put this into effect and nothing really comes of it. We don't know what that will look like in the future.
If I could, I know Seva wanted to make a couple of comments related to O BAG before we move on.
Thank you. Yeah, just I heard the presentation breakdown, so I thought I have some background on the O BAG funding side because I do work closely with our transportation authority and M T C on that. Just to give a little history on O BAG, as Darren mentioned, we are in O BAG cycle three. The first two cycles, it was a little bit more straightforward. M T C kind of allocates a big pool of money and I'll go into some little bit more numbers on the three cycle, but the first two cycles, whatever funding they had, they typically break it into two major pieces. One, they call the regional component and then the other one, they call the county and local component. And it used to be allocated based on population and other statistics, smaller based allocations. But for cycle three, they actually made some changes and they made it all competitive, basically. So the end for O BAG three, which was, which, which is going to end in twenty twenty six, which is the last fourth year for it. There was like seven hundred and fifty million dollars of monies that M T C allocated of that three seventy five outright got split for regional component. And within the regional component, there is multiple categories, there is various sizes and the funding that Darren mentioned, the two hundred thousand dollars we received was one component of that regional fund. And the reference to the Wilder Trail, I believe month or two ago, I made a small presentation on, with reference to the forty thousand dollars we got from M T C, that is also coming from that regional component of it. The local and county component is where we got the monies for the Signals project share. The reason we had to take that approach is because for O BAG three, M T C came up with a new criteria stating that they no more are going to allocate based on population density and stuff. So they basically said every county within the Bay Area of the nine counties, the three seventy five million, the maximum a county can get will be their share of like whatever three seventy five would have been nine is. And if they only have projects that qualify for it, so if a county didn't have enough qualifying projects, then they will lose that money and some other county can potentially get more than they originally were about allocated for. So our transportation authority reached out to all the regional cities and came with this collective project for the Signals countywide signal upgrade product, project because communities like us, we do have a little bit of struggle because there's various criteria requirements. For example, one is having an equity priority community, which Arinda does not have. And the way M T C does is they score their applications based on that. So we always lose points on those kind of things. But when you team up with the county, we actually on the, on the full county scale, we do qualify for certain things. So that's one approach we took and individually, Arinda also applied for a grant to develop enough for pathways, but unfortunately we were not too successful, even at the county level, let alone M T C level because these policies basically M T C uses to establish criteria. And my understanding has been that having the policy in place puts us qualifiers to apply for those grants. There are usually some checks and balances that they come through. For example, the measured J funds that we deal with our transportation authority, they require us to report every other year. And that is something I present to the council when I take it over there. We just follow back saying, this is how the funds were spent. These are the policies that relate to that and the city is still in compliance or we are still working towards compliance. That's typically the approach they take. So just wanted to share the background and I'm happy to answer any questions here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Seva. Should we move on to questions now? Okay. We have a lot of questions. Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Hoxey.
How important are these O BAG funds to the city of Arinda? Are there other sources for funding these sorts of projects? Is there, I just don't know, I'm new. So just trying to understand sort of the scale of the importance to the city.
And, and while you're answering that, I'll ask one of my questions, which is, it looked from, there were a couple of slides actually that we had and it looked like the, the dollar amount was actually not simply the, you know, if you count in the smart signals and you count in the, the multimodal path and the grant and if, if we, if we total it all up, it's, it's I was doing the math as we were going through the slides and the number was, I thought.
Two million dollars probably.
Okay, wasn't it even, okay, I thought it was even more. Well, we have the multimodal path grant too, potentially. Anyway.
If you could go through it, I'd, so the, the grant that you're currently looking to obtain with the town of Maraga for Maraga Way improvements, that's also an M T C grant. Is that part of this process?
No, that is slightly different. That's the regional measured three. So they call it the R M three grant. That comes from the toll funds, basically. I do not know exactly which pockets of funds M T C taps into, other than the toll funds for that money. But this is usually federal money that comes down through M T C. So they, again, I apologize, I don't have the specifics of how they come up with it. Basically, one way to look at it is all the monies that M T C it is, all the monies that MTC is responsible for dispersing from this one, that's where the 750 million comes. And MTC has our regional MPO, assumes policies, and their policy is guided based on the Bay Area 2050 documents, their plan, vision document, basically.
And Councilmember Hoxsey did that. In terms of how important this funding is, I don't know if anyone can provide more context.
I mean, Seva, there is really no other, I mean, MTC is our primary funding source because they pass through money to the local, to the regional CCTA as well, right?
Right. Yeah. So they, they are our regional organization, and then it comes down to CCTA, which is our local transportation, County Transportation Authority, and then locally gets distributed. Now, there are other funds, but the main federal funds, the source comes through MTC for whatever monies they have control.
Okay, so the main benefit to Arinda, if we choose to work to comply, is that we would then be eligible for these grants and funding through MTC, through OBAG for projects for, it sounds like roads and traffic mitigation and things like that?
That is what I'm understanding. Like Darren mentioned, I don't know how far the guidance, I mean, the requirements have been put in place for OBAG IV yet. But looking at the history, I wouldn't be surprised if they carry it over in a similar fashion. So one example would be like the Wilder Trail project. We more than likely will be looking at a OBAG IV grant, competitive grant to apply for, and having, you know, all the documents or processes in place that qualifies us will definitely benefit us.
Have we been denied grants in this third cycle that we've applied for?
We have been. So like you mentioned, so the, of the monies that the county got, about $50 million, I don't exact, I don't calculate the exact value, the county split it two ways, and they wanted to come up with a project that's 25, roughly $25 million worth. And that's where the Signals project came in. The other $25 million, they actually asked us to submit projects that we were going to submit towards OBAG III. They did a first level competitive selection for the first 24 million. And then together with their Countywide Signals project, they submitted to MTC, and then those got evaluated on a regional basis. So it's no more that we are designated to get a $50 million project, and we will get as long as there's a project. Now we are competing regionally for monies against other cities who have, who are able to show much more larger projects, much more larger dollar value support, match funds, community needs, and priority needs and all that. So yeah, the simplification is, yeah, we will definitely need funds like that. And our project for the OBAG Cycle Three, we submitted an individual project, hoping that we will get some grants to work on a, redeveloping a path on Camino Pablo. But we, our grant was not competitive enough, so it didn't get submitted to even MTC. So it, there were much more competitive projects within the county level that actually qualified us.
And I heard you say you thought to be substantially compliant would be 85%, but it's unclear to me of 85% of what. So if we're not at all compliant in the commercial area, for instance, does that knock us out altogether? So we don't, like, why are we bothering with the rest? Or I'm just unclear as to the substantial compliance and what it would take for the City of Arinda to be substantially compliant?
I know Darren's probably had more conversations with the MTC staff that's been liaising with us on that.
Yes, we simply just don't have guidance on that right now, I think is ultimately what it comes down to. The discussions that were brought up in the past were ultimately that there's, it's going to be very hard to quantify this because a lot of these are policy based, and just depend on how far the communities are pushing these. So the guidance right now is that it's going to, they're roughly putting out 85%. They're roughly putting out this idea of substantially compliant. We're not ultimately going to know whether or not we're considered substantially compliant until we have additional guidance from MTC. We do expect that to happen at some point in the springtime as they start to develop their OBAG IV cycle requirements.
So why wouldn't we proceed with the policies and things that we think would actually benefit Arinda and current Arinda residents and wait and see what MTC says about that, those actions? I'm thinking of the inclusionary housing policy, which I think we could argue might benefit Arinda to have. Our design review standards, which I think would benefit Arinda to have in place. Why don't we work towards those policies that we, as a community, might agree we need to have in place and wait and see on the rest what MTC tells us?
I don't know. So I think if that's a question, we'll do that. But otherwise, if we're, more discussion, if it is a question, I want to make sure it's answered.
I'm just trying to understand from a planning commission perspective, what the recommendation is for Arinda to pursue versus all of these things?
So we included on the policy side, we bolded the ones that we thought, that staff level thought would be relatively benign, easier for us to implement, and ones that were consistent with things that we already had to do.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to continue to pursue the inclusionary zoning. We're going to continue to pursue the ministerial approval updates that we need to make in order to be consistent with the housing element. But there were other things on that list that went beyond sort of the requirements from the current certified housing element. And so that's what we were looking to sort of get some feedback on. I mean, there's a lot of areas where you can pick from, and we were trying to come up with the things that we thought were probably most appropriate for the community. And but we may have got it wrong. You might have different thoughts about that. So we want to hear what your thoughts were about that. And then generally around these issues of density, which I know are a little bit different than what is currently being proposed as part of the Downtown Precise Plan.
So if we have additional questions, I just want to, before we get into any discussion, we still have public comment, and then we'll come back for discussion in terms of process. So I know I had a couple, some questions. Do other councilmembers have questions?
Yeah, go ahead. I'm interested to hear.
Okay.
I have a lot of comments.
Councilmember Riley. Question, please.
What is the estimated cost to the city? I know that there was that one item, that $50,000 a year.
Yeah, well, so we do have the $200,000 commitment for a four-year cycle. Other than this, the cost would be largely within staff time. Staff time, some consultant time. We have applied for technical assistance funding. So there's no result on that yet, so we don't have anything to report on that. But that's dealing with some of the parking management policies and how we can approach parking management in downtown Arinda. A lot of these aren't going to require a lot of funding commitments. For instance, looking at the preservation policies two and four, both of those, that's the providing tenants' first right of refusal, and also the requirement for condominiums to be replaced with comparable rental units. Those are policies, actually, that MTC has pledged to provide sample or model ordinances in May of 2025. So some of these policies that we are looking at that we're already not pursuing, or that we are currently not pursuing, we would continue to get assistance from MTC. We also have access, they do have, or they have hired consultants that they have assigned to the cities. So we are in contact with some of the consultants that they have in order to get additional assistance, and that is free to the city.
Can we get numbers to support all those possible consultant fees or technical assistance?
I think that's something that we could.
We could do some rough estimates of sort of the time and the value of that time and the consultant time.
Is it a million? Is it 200?
Yeah, we can do that. It'll be an estimate.
Yeah, yeah, but just something to talk, we can grasp.
Other, other questions? I had a couple. From the presentation, it looked like the, or something, am I correct in understanding, if a jurisdiction is not substantially compliant, could it jeopardize our ability to either participate regionally in application for grants under CCTA or receive money from CCTA?
That was the guidance that we got today from MTC staff, was that CCTA ultimately is taking guidance from MTC on what projects they fund. So they are also essentially looking at the TOC policy and how compliant the jurisdictions that are subordinate to that are.
Okay. And for, and could that have an impact then on the regional wide evacuation grant funding that we're looking at through CCTA? Like, could TOC compliance be a factor in that, that application?
Don't know the answer to that. We would have to double check that.
But that is a CCTA grant.
That's a CCTA grant. But I don't know where its funding came from initially, if it was generated from CCTA sources, or if it was a pass through from MTC.
And then the other, because it was mentioned in the slideshow, so, I mean, the PowerPoint, the RM Three Grant was Regional Measure Three, and that's the multimodal path, and that's a joint grant between Arinda and Moraga that we are seeking, right?
I don't remember.
Okay, sorry. Because my, is that the same grant that we've been talking about that if, could potentially allow us to, because it's about improving pedestrian and bike access, correct? The RM Three Grant, multimodal path, isn't that?
There is a little bit of strategy involved in that. But if I recollect it correctly, I think RM Three also has different categories. The categories we used was connecting to transit and to the greater Bay Area. So basically, the idea was connecting a community like Moraga have more access to Bard and southern side of Arinda have more access to Bard, other than mostly depending on driving and limited county connection right now, and then allowing them eventually to access like the Bay Trail and San Francisco area and all that, greater San Francisco. So I don't recollect the exact name of that category we went with, but that was the strategy we used.
But it's, it's, it would allow, is that the same one that would allow for more bicycle and pedestrian access and also potentially would give us opportunities to have more, if it were carried out in its ideal vision, it would potentially also allow us to have greater access to use in an evacuation?
Yeah, an auxiliary lane for evacuation.
Yeah, absolutely. That, the study itself, I mean, I mentioned what category of the grant we applied in, but the study's goal is basically, they'll estimate the feasibility of building a pathway, either grade separated or adjacent, and a class one bikeway, basically. So it's like 10 to 12 feet wide path, connecting basically Moraga, the Lafayette-Moraga Trail, along Moraga Way up to Arinda-Bard. That's the goal for that project study. And a part of that size, emergency vehicle will be able to access it during.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was going to note. And then the tenant legal assistance program that was average, that was the one that had the dollar figure of $50,000 per year. I thought I read in here, or maybe you said in the presentation, that it isn't, it's an allocation, or do we know, in other words, is that money a pot that's been, that is required to be set aside in hopes it'll be used, but if it's not used, then we retain the funds? Is that correct?
That is correct, I believe. And I think this is a nuance that would have to be explored. I believe that we would ultimately be, we would probably be contracting this out to an organization that provides these services. So chances are, there's going to be some administrative or overhead funding. I don't know if that counts towards the $200,000, or if that's going to be in addition to the $200,000.
Okay. And would it be fair to say that because these guidelines are being developed, we're going to learn more about what 85% compliance means and what a lot of this means over the next year?
Yeah.
Is that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the MTC is seeking information on whether agencies wish to comply by January of 2026. And so during this period of time, there's, I'm sure going to be additional guidance being provided as they work through some of those issues. I think a lot of agencies are going to struggle with the 85% compliance when, of course, there's no measurement for how to do that. And so hopefully, they'll refine that over the next 12 months, and that'll be easier for us to determine. But, you know, that's not going to leave us a lot of time to talk about a lot of these programs and policies. And so we thought we'd get a head start on it, especially since decisions about this could inform things that we might need to look at with respect to the Downtown Precise Plan. So we wanted to make sure we got it to you guys early, got some input and feedback. And if we needed to come back and talk about it more, we had time to do that in advance of any decisions that you guys want to take relative to the DPP.
Okay, those are my questions. Any other questions?
One more. Is this federal funding, like, pretty stable? This comes, this, we have the same amount available all the time, every year, doesn't fluctuate? I mean, can it dry up, or, you know, because of political reasons, it's not?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know. Seva has any answer to that?
I'm willing to answer that.
I think, Councilmember G might want to speak to that, but it's.
I can answer that well enough for you, Janet. Federal funding fluctuates greatly. I think you can believe in the new administration that federal funding for California is going to see as many cutbacks as possible. However, for the flow down of what we're talking about for Arinda, you know, what we have the option to tap into through MTC, I think you can consider it very stable, because we're talking about $1 million or $2 million, or, you know, we're talking about levels of money that are going to be there under any scenario you create. If you were, you know, the City of Los Angeles and you needed, you know, $2 billion, that's a different category, okay? So for our purposes and our thinking, I think you can assume the amount of possibility for us is pretty stable.
Thanks. Okay, any other questions before we move into public comment? Okay. I will call public comment. I have three speaker cards, and the first one does not have a name, but it looks like, the handwriting looks like maybe this is Mr. Warnoff. Did you, did you fill out? Oh, did you, Mr. Warnoff, I have a speaker card with no name, but it looks like your handwriting, so I believe. Okay, thank you. Then you were first, please.
I believe that the City of Arinda should abandon this program, and I plead guilty to calling it PDA and not TOC, but everything I said applies equally to the TOC. The benefits of this program are entirely speculative, and I could not disagree more with what Councilmember G said about our funding being smaller, so it's going to be assured. I don't know what you folks were doing yesterday, but based on what I saw on television, California's funding is going to be slashed, and the little people at the bottom like us, we're going to be completely cut off. But whether I'm right, or whether Councilmember G is right, the benefit is speculative. But the harm, the harm to Arinda is certain and permanent. And it's not the staff time, it's not even the $200,000. It's the increase in density. Once you upzone for the speculative benefit and things get built, and then the money isn't there for some benefit, the buildings are there. They're not going to come down because the federal funding didn't come through. The central tenant, if you look at the goals on page 113 of the packet, the goals are all about increasing density. And that is exactly what we cannot have. That is an existential issue in Arinda, an existential issue in Arinda. And although it may be true that the $200,000 doesn't have to be spent, some of it may get. get spent, but it has to be set aside, and that's $200,000 you don't have. It's $200,000 you could be spending on contraflow for Moraga Way. It's $200,000 you could be spending for the cut through for access to eastbound 24 for evacuation, but it's $200,000 you won't have. Those are the policy considerations. Legally, as I have shown, you are legally compelled to adopt all feasible mitigations because you have a finding of a significant impact on emergency evacuation. You are legally compelled to do everything you can to mitigate the impact of adding housing. And to do this is going in the opposite direction of mitigation here. You're making the matter even worser and worser, and you cannot legally do that. Adding density is the opposite of trying to solve the problem, and it's not warranted here for a speculative benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Peter Levine. No? Peter Levine.
Good evening. It's been a long evening. I have followed this matter for 17 years here in Arinda, since the original 2008 PDA flurry. I commented many times back in those days and less frequently in the interim. It's back. I'm here tonight to strongly support Mr. Warinoff's January 20th email to all of you on this subject and his comments tonight. Mr. Warinoff has spoken this evening and on prior occasions on many subjects. I strongly urge you not to tire of listening to his voice, especially on a matter this important. Look, I, I know you all have dollars in your eyes, but, and you all have a tough job ahead of you to balance the implementation of the housing element with the fire, wildfire evacuation implementations. Balance is the key word. You understand that. Your citizens can be educated to understand the need for that balance. MTC doesn't care about that balance. A-BAG doesn't care about that balance. They're all about housing and to a tiny degree, transportation, which they should be focused on. I don't know how to say it any other way, but I just encourage you to make your own decisions and not be burdened by having to implement all of this overhead and uncertainty that currently exists with this TOC remodel of the PDA. For disclosure, I live within a half mile of a BART station. I am in that gray area that was in the slide that was shown earlier. I have many neighbors who would be here if that was the actual subject of the discussion tonight. Actually, all I have to say this evening, I sent you some written comments also. I hope you eventually get them and take the time to read them. And I don't waste any more of your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to assure you that we did receive your written comments, so thank you, as well as some others. Is there, and are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on this item, who are here tonight? Yeah, if you can. You don't need to fill out a card. Or, you can come here, if you'd like, ma'am, and speak into that microphone. We just need to hear you in a microphone. And if you could, if you could introduce yourself and then?
My name is Judy Eben. I live on Tahoe's Road. We've lived there for 50 years and had, had State Farm Insurance for 50 years. We're not going to be renewed. We have some beautiful oak trees that the fire department might want us to take out. City of Arinda has different rules. And what I'm concerned about is, when are you two going to get together and come up with rules that will please both of you? Because I, I hesitate to do anything. State Farm said, oh, do you have trees? We would have never, we would have never insured you if we knew you had trees, Arinda, 50 years ago. So one of our trees is well over 100 years old. The circumference is way beyond Arinda's rules, I think. And yet, it's close to the house. So what do we do? I'm going to wait and not do anything until we find out that Moraga Fire District and Arinda are on the same page of what we should do. Have you done any research into that? Because it's, I can't get the straight answer from both, you know, I've called City Hall, I've called FireWise Chairman and things like that. So that's my main concern. So hopefully, you'll think about that. I don't know if you, any of you are in this position, but it's really scary to not be able to get insurance.
Yeah. Thank you. And we're not allowed to respond to public comment directly with that, so that's the process. That's why we didn't respond to others, but thank you for making us aware. I think we are aware.
Serious stuff. And I want to commend Nick for trying to fill the whole community in on some very, very important things that some people never even think about. And helping, I think it's helping Arinda a lot to have an opinion like that, pro and con, but I think he's great. And Peter, whoever supported him, I agree too. So, you know, I'm kind of, should be more, more proactive, but I'm really fired up about this. So thank you both.
Okay. Thank you for your comment, ma'am. Okay, do we have any other members of the public that would like to comment on this Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring this back to the council for discussion.
Do we know what our neighboring cities, Moraga and Lafayette, are doing vis a vis this TOC?
Well, I guess.
I, I don't know if staff has had the opportunity to talk with them yet. I know a lot of jurisdictions are now trying to grapple with the TOC policy and how to potentially implement it.
I would suggest Moraga may not be subject to it.
Correct, given their proximity or lack thereof to a.
Lafayette, most certainly is.
Yes.
May I? Yes. Vice Mayor. Stick my neck out and try to see if I can put a positive framework on this, because this was presented to us about six or nine months ago, and it was, it was really scary. It was framed as more, you know, impossible burdens before we had even met the last impossible burden, and rules that were so poorly fit to our facts that we had no chance of complying. I thought this presentation was, really got up to the core mission and philosophy of what MTC is trying to accomplish. And I feel like the way it's being framed is there's more carrots than sticks. Unlike the RENA, where if you don't meet every single check on the checkbox, there's horrible consequences. Here, I feel like, these are good grants. I want these grants, but these are not life or death if we don't get them. And a lot of times, we don't get them. I read this in the spirit of, we have a BART station. In MTC, their mission is to see maximum mixed use, office, retail, and residential, as dense as possible around transit resources. And equity for that organization is a, is a primary goal. So these rules are their way of trying to create maximum compliance with their mission. I didn't read this as, we're going to lose everything if we don't comply. I, I actually read it in the spirit that, to the extent we're doing things that are compatible, just as Councilmember Hoxsey said, let's try to show that we also respect affordable housing and equity and putting density closer to the transit resources, but let's not turn ourselves upside down, change what we're doing. We have to comply with the housing element in the RENA. And to the extent this is compatible, I like a lot of the things that I see about the, you know, not having horrible congestion where everyone is doing a single occupancy vehicle everywhere they're going. Planning for parking that makes sense when things do get more congested. I, I think there are a lot of good ways to show good faith compliance, but I did not see this as the initial threat of, you know, fear of loss. So hopefully, we can take it in that spirit.
Thank you. Other comment? Councilmember G?
Yeah, I have a lot, so I'll try to contain myself. I absolutely care very much about not going overboard on density, okay? I think this is a fine line. Try to weave it together, take what we already have, because I have another aspect of this that I think is extremely critical, and that is, I think, a lot of this is trying to weave together enough to not eliminate ourselves while we do other things. And I disagree that this O-BAG funding isn't important to us. It's super important, because we don't have any way to backstop it, and it's just going to get worse and worse. I'm looking at Seva, because he understands, because the mission of transportation funding in today's environment is to go all competitive, and the, and we are already at a huge disadvantage. And some of the things that you mentioned, things like the pavement to make Moraga Way essentially three lanes for things like evacuation, things that can connect, that provide more routes, all kinds of these things tie into the biggest, most important issue, right? As well as the fact that, yes, the whole community has as their number one priority, fire safety, and getting out of here if the worst case scenario happens, right? That all makes perfect sense. But that doesn't mean everything else in this community is going to go away, okay? I bet you all have gotten 15 emails in the last month about worried mothers with kids walking to school that want more crosswalks. Well, guess where we get the money to pay for those crosswalks? Okay? And this is the only source of it. We can say we can take it out of our own pocketbook, but then that's taking it away from the number one priority as well. There is a lot of, there is a lot of thinking and strategy that goes with transportation funding, and it's only becoming worse. So trying to get out of the game, I think this is a, this is a careful weaving together without going overboard, because I don't want to go overboard. In fact, I'm ready to go the other way in terms of really being very concerned about not overdoing the density issue. I'm very willing to look at that. But if there's one place where it probably does belong, it's closest to the BART station, and that's probably where we can again tell the best story. But I think the most critical element to everything is the one that hasn't come up tonight, although I did discuss it with the city manager this afternoon, and that is, my gosh, we need to be out there lobbying. MTC, by my count, and I don't even have the right number at the top of my head, has a minimum of six new commissioners. There are a lot of new incoming commissioners at CCTA, but the real important part is the MTC commissioners. They can be lobbied. They can be lobbied hard, and they can be lobbied hard in the aftermath of this horrible situation in LA, that some of the communities in the Bay Area, like Arinda, don't, shouldn't be at the mercy of every aspect of this TOC policy because of our vulnerability to fire, okay? This TOC policy can be changed tomorrow by MTC. This is a completely brought together. This is part of why I want the Townsend people and the Lafayette-Moraga-Arinda coalition, and, and just plain getting our butts out, because first of all, two of the MTC commissioners sit on CCTA. One of them, the newest one, is Candace Anderson, okay? The second one that is probably in our court is Sue Noack from, who took Amy's place from Pleasant Hill. Both of them are incredibly good possibilities for understanding that a community like Arinda and Lafayette are not the kinds of communities that should be subject to the kinds of things you want to build in Oakland and San Francisco, okay? And I think we have got to add that into the mix. Do the fine dance in the short term, because losing the, the couple million dollars a year that we get, there's no replacement for it, folks. We just, it's not going to come from anywhere else. And I don't want to see us lose access to all that money, because some of that money does relate. I mean, the Smart Signals Program, that, part of that's O-BAG money. If we had gotten turned down for that, the Smart Signals Program does relate to evacuation. It's not the primary component of it, but it's related to it. It's, it could be very important at a certain moment in time. So I don't want to take that off the table. But I want to lobby hard that they have got to get this cleaned up to make more sense. And there are, and, and I would suggest that we have got to lobby with our other small city crowd in the Bay Area too, because it's not just us. I had a long talk with a very intelligent person that was very in the know about this this morning. And there are places like No Valley and other places that are subject to these requirements, maybe not always because of a BART station, but because of some other transit facility, that we need, you know, we need a coalition that's a little bit more building of the willing of the small cities. This policy really belongs in Oakland and San Francisco and San Jose and, you know, maybe a Palo Alto, or, you know, someplace where it makes some greater sense. But I think we've got the best argument in the world right now over the fire safety issue. So do the dance, don't lose it in the short term, and do the dance for the longer term that makes it a more believable scenario for us. We're not going to get rid of the BART station. I, once upon a time, I thought the BART station was one of the most valuable assets in Arinda. In recent times, it's become one of our biggest liabilities. So I think that the reality is, is we've got to, we've got to work with keeping it as much of an asset as we can and, you know, and work through this. And also, you know, we have the ability, part of the reason I wanted to see us bring on advocacy was, you know, it's not just lobbying the MTC commissioners, but it's also lobbying our legislators. So, so those are my comments.
Good job. Thank you. Councilmembers, Riley, Hoxsey, do you want to?
Well, I'm obviously new to all of this and just trying to take it all in and understand the dance, as you so aptly put it. I think we have to look at everything from the lens of what benefits Arinda, and that's why I asked the questions about, you know, the funding and, and what we use that funding for, and what we need that funding for, and where else we could get that funding. It seems clear that there aren't a lot of other sources. It also seems clear that what Councilmember G said is absolutely true. We need to get MTC to change some of these things in light of the wildfire risk that we all acknowledge and understand we face. But we, we still need the funding. So as I started to say earlier during the question period, I, I feel like we need to look hard at the things that we can already do and are trying to do, and policies that would benefit Arinda to adopt, possibly an inclusionary housing policy, possibly the design review standards, while not doing the things that would be negative for Arinda, to the extent that we can avoid it. And, you know, the other thing I'm beginning to learn is that, you know, zoning and allowing doesn't necessarily equate to building, so that even if we adopt policies, that doesn't necessarily mean people are going to come in and build to those standards. So those are the things I've been thinking about.
Okay, and? I just, it is 9:54, so before I have to interrupt someone mid-sentence, can we have a motion to extend the meeting by, I do think we have a staff report and a council member report that might take a couple minutes, so I'm going to propose until 10:20? I'll move to extend to 10:20. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you all.
Vice Mayor.
I just, before we wrap up, I wanted to pass along two more comments. One is that innate in the MTC policy is the idea that BART transportation will be usable to evacuate. All of this, not allowing any parking within that half mile, or even putting maximums of parking, assumes that people are, you know, that these are urban environments like San Francisco or Oakland, where people will live without a car. In order to do that, if there were an evacuation, people would have to know that they could get out on BART, and from. And from all the public comments we've gotten, I don't know one person in Arinda who would rely on BART to evacuate. And so I just wanted to address that disconnect, because all of their parking requirements are fundamentally in conflict with today's reality, that nobody has any trust and confidence it will be there for them in a, a situation like that. On the other hand, I do think the BART lot is one of our kind of, I forget what the word is, it's like a refuge, a gathering spot. So the BART lot itself might be safe, but the BART transportation system, as of today, they're asking us to do the impossible. My only other comment is for the, the staff to look at page nine of 61 in the packet, production policy for public lands for affordable housing. And again, this is like armchair land use planning, but as I read the specific language of the purpose of that policy and the relevant state law being the Surplus Lands Act, I think we don't have to be the owner of that policy. It seems to me like activating surplus lands owned by any public agency accomplishes that goal, and that would apply to the Caltrans site even more so than ultimately the BART site. But if you look at some of the things about it, it's for places where land is not very available, where land is very expensive, that where affordable housing won't happen unless a public landowner makes that land available with deed restrictions for affordable. That all felt like it was talking to the kind of opportunity we have at the Caltrans site. And I would just ask you to talk to MTC and see if that might be one of these over and above compliances that would save us some of the, the more technical stuff if we are activating that site. And that was everything.
Okay. And I guess, I don't want to repeat a lot of really great points that have been made, but I mean, I genuinely agree that we should, to the extent it is consistent with our housing element and other things, absolutely make an effort to substantially comply, because we do need these funds. And more importantly, I think this ties in pretty critically with our planning for evacuation, because it is an Arinda problem, but it is a regional problem, right? And we are, you know, the smart signals is key, because it allows us to synchronize those signals in the event of an evacuation or an emergency. And that's a regional effort with regional, you know, with grants. And also, you know, the multimodal path on Maraga Way, I think, could be hugely critical in it if we're able to get that funding in the event of evacuation, because it could allow for a third lane, which together with Contra Flow could, could be really helpful in an area that is, you know, geographically otherwise limited, right? So, and I think that in general, we need to be looking at evacuation and emergency preparedness on a regional level and a countywide level. And that's why, that's why this is important. So it's not, it is actually, to me, beyond definitely needing the money, money in, in terms of the funding for these projects, because there's really isn't another source, you know, and I think Councilmember G, you know, referenced this, is this is actually, to me, goes hand in glove with being more prepared in the event of an emergency, wildfire, earthquake, or otherwise, right? So beyond that, the only specific things, there was a question about density, and there was, you know, in terms of residential density, there was a, a slide we saw that showed that the residential density in the DPP was 20, I think. And to the extent that is what's required by the housing element, right? Or what is, you know, I guess I would, I would like to see us do what we need to do to be substantially compliant. But again, we need to think about time, climate change and the realities of that. And so to the extent that, that that would allow, you know, as we learn more about what substantial compliance means, I guess we'd have to, but, but I also think we, we need to be aware of, of keeping that, again, consistent with what we need to do to have our housing element, but not, not necessarily going to the recommend, the recommendations here seemed a little higher. And, and I do think that the commercial density is just, I agree with the staff's sort of recom, you know, view on that being a really very difficult for some, a place like Arinda as opposed to more urban environments. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to, I'd like to at least wrap this up with finding out whether there's support for my idea of lobbying MTC. I'm more than willing to be directly involved, but I think it would be important that we have sort of an action plan that staff helps us with and, you know, maybe taps into our advocate. But obviously, we, you know, we know well, some of the MTC commissioners, and like I said, the time is ripe, because there is a big turnover, maybe the biggest turnover in years on the commission. So it's, it's a lot of new faces, a lot of new ears, and I think it's important.
I agree with that 100%. Yeah, that makes sense. Absolutely.
Great unanimous consensus on that. That was on my list of things, just to make sure as we wrap up this discussion and move on to the next discussion. So it sounds like there's general desire to try to comply with the letter here and try to weave compliance together in a way that makes sense for this community, and I think that's what we'll continue to work on. And we'll look forward to pressing on some of our new representatives on MTC to see if we can make some modifications to these guidelines to reflect the conditions that some communities are faced with, including Arinda. Did I miss anything on that? Captured everything? Okay?
I think so.
All right. It's a continued conversation, so, you know, we'll, over the next several months, I'm sure we'll be talking about it again. I don't know if we need to come back at the next meeting. I think we were kind of, kind of plugging in, but maybe we'd have to come back and talk to you again right away, but it sounds like we've gotten some clear direction, so appreciate that.
Yeah. I think, I appreciate staff bringing this to us.
So programs and policies that we were sort of recommending, you're kind of, there's not a lot of issues with what that, although we'll look into the public trust issue a little bit more that Vice Mayor brought up. Okay?
Yeah, and appreciate staff bringing this to us as sort of in real time, so that we can provide this input, you know, on how it impacts. Okay, then moving on, we have H3, which is the City Council Committee Appointment List, Liaison List for 2025. City Manager, do you want to start, or should I?
Yeah, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. So at the previous meeting, you adopted assignments for many of the regional boards. We, at that meeting, discussed changes to the proposed, to the subcommittees. We got that clarity from you. And so after that meeting, I believe that the mayor took the time to go through and make her recommendations for those subcommittees. And then we had the two carryover items, the liaisons, that weren't addressed at the last meeting, the Calshakes Liaison that was inadvertently omitted, and then the Chamber Liaison to assure that it was connected with the selection for the subcommittee. So I wanted to bring that forward. I think another thing maybe to chat about briefly, because I know it's getting late, is whether or not the Calshakes Theater Liaison should continue to be called the Calshakes Theater Liaison, or rather, maybe change that to a more general name, because of the circumstances that we now find Calshakes is no longer around for us to talk about.
And as to that last point, the idea was that the, it could be called the Cultural Arts Liaison and could liaison with Calshakes or the entity that takes over the Calshakes location in addition to the La Mirada Arts Council and perhaps Arinda Theater. So that is, concludes the report. If there, are there any questions? Otherwise, we do have one public comment. No, I think it's fine.
So in the interest of time with the, the nomenclature change of Calshakes, as described, I'm willing to move that we approve the list.
Okay, before we do that, we, we, I just want to make sure we have, yeah.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor Malkani, council members, city staff, and members of the public. I'm speaking tonight as the Vice President of the Arinda Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. And so we'd like to take the opportunity to thank Mayor Malkani for serving as our liaison, and we certainly look forward to the opportunity to get to know Councilmember Hoxsey better and having her as our liaison. We also appreciate the continued support of all the council members, as well as our close relationships with staff, and wanted to acknowledge that. We also wanted to thank City Clerk Smith for making the correction of our meeting time so that it will be reflected appropriately moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, back to the council for discussion or perhaps a motion.
Okay, my motion still stands.
I'll second it.
All in favor of, so for clarity, is a, is a motion to change the, Calshakes Theater Liaison to Cultural Arts Liaison, is that acceptable, Councilmember? Okay.
I guess I would, you have some other language in there that's not just limited to the three organizations we just said, because the things evolve. I mean, I can't remember what the Arinda Play.
The Starlight Players.
I mean, I mean, should that, you know, I mean, so just make it a little broader and other art, yeah, groups.
Yeah. We don't technically have a description, I don't think, of the liaison, but I think this discussion is.
For the minutes, then.
For the minutes. We have consist, we have consensus that it would be broader. Okay, great. So, so the motion is to approve the appointment list as, as proposed with the one amendment, or as amended with the Cultural Arts Liaison title, replacing what is currently listed as the Calshakes Theater. Agreed. And we had a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that passes unanimously. That takes us to council members' reports. Do we have, I, I have some stuff to share, but I don't know if others do. Okay, otherwise, I'll be brief. There is, as we saw tonight, there's, I've received a lot of public comment about concerns and that, you know, one of the things I started talking to our county supervisors about an idea, which is to have a regional working group focused on wildfire and perhaps also earthquake, emergency preparedness and evacuation, and that it would, should be a roll-up-your-sleeves, you know, meet twice a week, everyone does homework, working group, and it should be a public and private partnership to the extent that it is a, you know, local jurisdictions and government, along with our utilities and also transportation, right? And the county does have an Office of Emergency Services, and they do do these regional, and I think that our city manager can talk more of this, because this will just such way into city manager reports, but they do meet regionally, but they, you know, the presentations are more general, there's understandably a lot of concerns, you know, focused on other areas of Contra Costa County, we have refineries here, we have a lot of things that fit, you know, that fit into emergency preparedness, right? And right now, I think we need more. We need something that's, you know, starts ASAP and meets regularly, like twice a month and just so that, because we all have our own emergency preparedness plans. But, you know, and I know this has been raised, and Ex-Boy Mud says we have the water and the pressure and all that, so this is maybe not the best example anymore, but I want to make sure that, I think we all want, you know, and our residents want to know the questions about water pressure or whatever else it is need to be brainstormed now, because in an emergency, we all know things will go wrong, right? And there are no guarantees, but we at least have to try to do our best. And I really think it's, it's a county issue to address. So City Manager and I are going to try to meet with, the good news is, our supervisors seem responsive, at least informally, and so we'll see. And so we're going to try to meet with Supervisor Anderson's office to just, you know, follow through on that. And so, so that's one thing. And then there have been a couple folks that have responded. One of them was Sunil, who was here, and I think he's going to be meeting with you, City Manager, about this. And another, you know, I've gotten a couple responses from, that there might be a possibility that insurance companies, some, might be interested in, in writing insurance for communities or neighborhoods that are willing to, you know, voluntarily adopt sort of the IBHS guidelines, the insurance industry guidelines. So we'll see if that plays out, but, you know, I'm, if things come to me, it's not, it's not, none of this is sort of an agenda items or acts, anything that we actually control in Arinda, it's just advocacy to Councilmember G's point about, you know, we just need to be continuing to advocate. So, and I know this is stuff that all of you have worked on, so I just wanted to share that. Those are some ideas.
May I ask a question about that? I read what is sent to us about the, the latest developments in the state's insurance regulation, but it's very hard to know how to answer citizens who are trying to deal day by day with not being able to find insurance and sort of saying, well, they're working on it, it's coming, they're, so I'm wondering if there would be a way that we could get somebody within the city manager's orbit to maybe give us a briefing every other meeting, just a, a quick sort of practical interpretation of developments, you know, what does it mean that modeling will affect wildfire pricing, just things like that? If there was any, if there was any way that we could get informed in a more practical way, I would, I would appreciate that.
I'll have to noodle on how to do that and not be, I mean, there's not a lot of change in a very short period of time with respect to regulations. I mean, obviously, the one thing that we're counting on happening soon is the release of the very high fire severity zone maps by the state. And so we need to, we don't know what those look like yet. What we've heard is that we expect 200 more communities and areas to be added. So, I mean, think about it, there's 430 or so communities in California, they're going to add 200 more to the list, so that's pretty substantial. So there's, there probably will be an update at some point around that, and we could try to find someone to update on insurance, but, you know, I think maybe an update. I know there's a lot of things going on in Sacramento now with respect to responding to the wildfire disaster and also probably to address insurance issues. So maybe we can work on whether Casey can join us either once a month or every other month, give us those updates from a legislative perspective, but also anything we can obtain about when these maps are going to come out and how it might impact communities that have these maps. Because I think that'll be the bigger, bigger issue.
I mean, certainly having Casey come and talk to us, right, could be to the, especially now, right, as we're having, because, could be helpful. Townsend, right?
Yeah, and I guess I care less about me being on the cutting edge of knowing and more having practical talking points that I can give to citizens who are working through this, because I know all of us get calls and letters. And so to the extent we are hearing about people that are doing coverage, if we hear about actual changes that are going to be, it was, it was more that, it was more the, because the rate of hopefully solutions coming is relatively quick, something just like a once a month, so it was, it was more the practical, what do we tell people in the community so we can be part of the solution?
Okay. I will try to think about. Any other comments?[358.00-365.00][S04] Yeah, I'd just like to, I'd like to at least wrap this up with finding out whether[365.27-370.41][S04] there's support for my idea of lobbying MTC. I'm more than willing to be directly[370.41-375.53][S04] involved, but I think it would be important that we have sort of an action plan that[375.53-380.81][S04] staff helps us with and, you know, maybe taps into our advocate. But obviously, we,[380.81-387.00][S04] you know, we know well some of the MTC commissioners. And like I said, the time is ripe because[387.00-392.44][S04] there is a big turnover, maybe the biggest turnover in years on the commission. So[392.44-396.66][S04] it's, it's a lot of new faces, a lot of new ears, and I think it's important.[396.66-398.66][S03] I agree with that 100%.[398.66-400.66][S01] Yeah, that makes sense.[400.66-401.66][S03] Absolutely.[401.66-406.31][S05] Great unanimous consensus on that. That was on my list of things just to make[406.31-410.31][S05] sure as we wrap up this discussion and move on to the next discussion. So it sounds like[410.31-417.31][S05] there's general desire to try to comply with the letter here and try to weave compliance[419.03-423.25][S05] together in a way that makes sense for this community. And I think that's what we'll[423.25-430.25][S05] continue to work on. And we'll look forward to pressing on some of our new representatives[430.34-436.41][S05] on MTC to see if we can make some modifications to these guidelines to reflect the conditions[436.41-441.94][S05] that some communities are faced with, including Arinda.[441.94-445.31][S05] Did I miss anything on that? Did captured everything?[445.31-446.31][S01] I think so.[446.31-447.31][S05] All right.[447.31-448.31][S01] I think you did capture.[448.31-452.31][S05] Continued conversation. So, you know, we'll, over the next several months, I'm[452.31-455.81][S05] sure we'll be talking about again. I don't know if we need to come back at the next meeting.[455.81-459.91][S05] I think we were kind of, kind of plugging in, maybe we'd have to come back and talk[459.91-462.81][S05] to you again right away, but it sounds like we've gotten some clear direction. So appreciate[462.81-463.81][S05] that.[463.81-466.81][S01] Yeah, I think, I appreciate that.[466.81-471.16][S05] So the programs and policies that we were sort of recommending, you're kind of,[471.16-475.22][S05] there's not a lot of issues with what that, although we'll look into the public trust[475.22-478.81][S05] issue a little bit more that Vice Mayor brought up.[478.81-479.81][S05] Okay?[479.81-485.72][S01] Yeah, and appreciate staff bringing this to us as sort of in real time so that[485.72-492.72][S01] we can provide this input, you know, on how it impacts.[492.81-500.66][S01] Okay, then moving on, we have H3, which is the City Council Committee Appointment List,[500.66-507.66][S01] Liaison List for 2025.[507.66-514.66][S01] City Manager, do you want to start or should I?[514.66-515.66][S05] Yeah, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. So at the previous meeting, you[519.62-526.62][S05] adopted assignments for many of the regional boards. We, at that meeting, discussed changes[528.48-534.38][S05] to the proposed, to the subcommittees. We got that clarity from you. And so after that[534.38-539.61][S05] meeting, I believe that the mayor took the time to go through and make her recommendations[539.61-544.41][S05] for those subcommittees. And then we had the two carryover items, the liaisons that[544.41-551.41][S05] weren't addressed at the last meeting, the Calshakes Liaison that was inadvertently omitted,[551.41-558.41][S05] and then the Chamber Liaison to assure that it was connected with the selection for the[558.54-564.29][S05] subcommittee. So I wanted to bring that forward. I think another thing maybe to chat about[564.29-569.38][S05] briefly, because I know it's getting late, is whether or not the Calshakes Theater Liaison[569.38-575.32][S05] should continue to be called the Calshakes Theater Liaison, or rather maybe change that[575.32-581.88][S05] to a more general name because of the circumstances that we now find Calshakes is no longer around[581.88-584.16][S05] for us to talk about.[584.16-591.16][S01] And as to that last point, the idea was that the, it could be called the Cultural[591.98-598.98][S01] Arts Liaison and could liaison with Calshakes or the entity that takes over the Calshakes[599.62-606.62][S01] location in addition to the La Mirada Arts Council and perhaps Arinda Theater.[608.75-613.29][S01] So that is conclusive report. If there, are there any questions? Otherwise, we do[613.29-614.29][S01] have one public comment.[614.29-616.29][S02] No, I think it's fine.[616.29-623.29][S06] So in the interest of time with the, the nomenclature change of Calshakes as described,[625.88-628.41][S06] I'm willing to move that we approve the list.[628.41-632.41][S01] Okay, before we do that, we, we, I just want to make sure we have.[632.41-633.41][S06] Yeah, public comment.[633.41-634.41][S01] Yeah.[634.41-637.29][S01] Juliet.[637.29-644.29][S07] Good evening, good evening, Mayor Malkani, council members, city staff, and members[646.98-651.66][S07] of the public. I'm speaking tonight as the Vice President of the Arinda Chamber of Commerce[651.66-657.88][S07] Board of Directors. And so we'd like to take the opportunity to thank Mayor Malkani for[657.88-662.23][S07] serving as our liaison. And we certainly look forward to the opportunity to get to[662.23-668.25][S07] know Councilmember Hoxsey better and having her as our liaison. We also appreciate the[668.25-672.38][S07] continued support of all the council members, as well as our close relationships with[672.38-678.88][S07] staff, and wanted to acknowledge that. We also wanted to thank City Clerk Smith for[678.88-685.19][S07] making the correction of our meeting time so that it will be reflected appropriately[685.19-686.19][S07] moving forward.[686.19-687.19][S07] Thank you.[687.19-688.19][S01] Thank you.[688.19-695.19][S01] Thank you. Okay, back to the council for discussion or perhaps a motion?[695.19-699.12][S06] Okay, my motion still stands.[699.12-701.12][S01] I'll second it.[701.12-708.12][S01] All in favor of, so for clarity, is a, is a motion to change the[708.12-715.12][S06] Yeah, my motion.[715.12-718.69][S01] Calshakes Theater Liaison to Cultural Arts Liaison, is that acceptable, Councilmember?[718.69-720.69][S01] Okay.[720.69-721.69][S08] Yes.[721.69-728.69][S09] I guess I would, you have some other language in there that's not just limited[730.05-735.48][S09] to the three organizations we just said, because the things evolve. I mean, I can't[735.48-736.81][S09] remember what the Arinda play.[736.81-738.81][S06] The Starlight Players.[738.81-741.23][S09] I mean, I mean, should that, you know, I mean, so just make it a little broader[741.23-744.00][S09] and other art, yeah, groups.[744.00-749.81][S01] Yeah, we don't technically have a description, I don't think, of the liaison, but I think[749.81-751.81][S01] this discussion is.[751.81-752.81][S09] For the minutes, then.[752.81-756.81][S01] For the minutes, we have consist, we have consensus that it would be broader.[756.81-763.81][S01] Okay, so, so the motion is to approve the appointment list as, as proposed with the[777.00-784.00][S01] one amendment, or as amended with the Cultural Arts Liaison title, replacing what is currently[787.16-790.00][S01] listed as the Calshakes Theater.[790.00-795.81][S01] Agreed. And we had a second, so all in favor?[795.81-796.81][S05] Aye.[796.81-797.81][S01] Any opposed?[797.81-804.81][S01] Okay, so that passes unanimously. That takes us to council members' reports. Do[809.52-815.12][S01] we have, I have some stuff to share, but I don't know if others do. Okay, otherwise,[815.12-822.12][S01] I'll be brief. There is, as we saw tonight, there's, I've received a lot of public comment[824.85-831.85][S01] about concerns and that, you know, one of the things I started talking to our county[838.70-845.70][S01] supervisors about an idea, which is to have a regional working group focused on wildfire[849.88-855.48][S01] and perhaps also earthquake, emergency preparedness and evacuation. And that it would, should[855.48-862.48][S01] be a roll up your sleeves, you know, meet twice a week, everyone does homework, working[864.06-871.06][S01] group. And it should be a public and private partnership to the extent that it is a, you[871.23-877.00][S01] know, local jurisdictions and government, along with our utilities and also transportation,[877.00-883.23][S01] right? And the county does have an Office of Emergency Services and they do do these[883.23-886.81][S01] regional, and I think that our city manager can talk more of this because this will just[886.81-893.81][S01] such way into city manager reports, but they do meet regionally, but they, you know, the[894.06-898.70][S01] presentations are more general. There's understandably a lot of concerns focused[898.70-902.56][S01] on other areas of Contra Costa County. We have refineries here. We have a lot of things[902.56-908.62][S01] that, you know, that fit into emergency preparedness, right? And right now, I think we need more.[908.62-915.62][S01] We need something that's, you know, starts ASAP and meets regularly, like twice a month[917.12-923.12][S01] and just so that, because we all have our own emergency preparedness plans. But, you[923.12-926.41][S01] know, and I know this has been raised and East Bay Mud says we have the water and the[926.41-931.25][S01] pressure and all that. So this is maybe not the best example anymore, but I want to[931.25-936.91][S01] make sure that, I think we all want, you know, and our residents want to know the questions[936.91-943.91][S01] about water pressure or whatever else it is, need to be brainstormed now. Because in[944.73-949.81][S01] an emergency, we all know things will go wrong, right? And there are no guarantees,[949.81-954.38][S01] but we at least have to try to do our best. And I really think it's, it's a county issue[954.38-959.12][S01] to address. So city manager and I are going to try to meet with, the good news is our[959.12-965.41][S01] supervisors seem responsive, at least informally. And so we'll see. And so we're going to try[965.41-972.41][S01] to meet with Supervisor Anderson's office to just, you know, follow through on that.[972.81-979.81][S01] And so, so that's one thing. And then there have been a couple folks that have responded.[981.81-986.25][S01] One of them was Sunil, who was here, and I think he's going to be meeting with you,[986.25-991.75][S01] City Manager, about this. And another, you know, I've gotten a couple responses from[991.75-997.81][S01] that there might be a possibility that insurance companies, some, might be interested in, in[997.81-1004.81][S01] writing insurance for communities or neighborhoods that are willing to, you know, voluntarily[1006.98-1011.12][S01] adopt sort of the IBHS guidelines, insurance industry guidelines. So we'll see if that[1011.12-1017.12][S01] plays out, but, you know, I'm, if things come to me, it's not, it's not, none of this[1017.12-1021.31][S01] is sort of an agenda items or anything that we actually control under window. It's just[1021.31-1027.66][S01] advocacy to Councilmember G.'s point about, you know, we just need to be continuing to[1027.66-1031.23][S01] advocate. So, and I know this is stuff that all of you have worked on, so I just wanted[1031.23-1034.41][S01] to share that. Those are some ideas.[1034.41-1041.41][S10] May I ask a question about that? I read what is sent to us about the, the latest[1043.12-1048.00][S10] developments in the state's insurance regulation, but it's very hard to know how to answer[1048.00-1054.23][S10] citizens who are trying to deal day by day with not being able to find insurance and[1054.23-1058.66][S10] sort of saying, well, they're working on it. It's coming, they're, so I'm wondering[1058.66-1064.56][S10] if there would be a way that we could get somebody within the city manager's orbit[1064.56-1071.56][S10] to maybe give us a briefing every other meeting, just a quick sort of practical interpretation[1073.48-1080.48][S10] of developments, you know, what does it mean that modeling will affect wildfire pricing,[1082.23-1087.00][S10] just things like that. If there was any, if there was any way that we could get informed[1087.00-1090.12][S10] in a more practical way, I would, I would appreciate that.[1090.12-1096.66][S05] I'll have to noodle on how to do that and not be, I mean, there's not a lot[1096.66-1103.66][S05] of change in a very short period of time with respect to regulations. I mean, obviously,[1103.73-1110.73][S05] the one thing that we're counting on happening soon is the release of the very high fire[1110.73-1116.12][S05] severity zone maps by the state. And so we need to, we don't know what those look like[1116.12-1123.12][S05] yet, but we've heard is that we expect 200 more communities and areas to be added. So,[1125.23-1131.00][S05] I mean, think about it, there's 430 or so communities in California. They're going[1131.00-1138.00][S05] to add 200 more to the list. So that's pretty substantial. So there's, there probably will[1139.33-1145.16][S05] be an update at some point around that. And we could try to find someone to update on[1145.16-1149.66][S05] insurance, but, you know, I think maybe an update, I know there's a lot of things going[1149.66-1156.66][S05] on in Sacramento now with respect to responding to the wildfire disaster and also probably[1157.06-1163.06][S05] to address insurance issues. So maybe we can work on whether Casey can join us either[1163.06-1168.00][S05] once a month or every other month, give us those updates from a legislative perspective,[1168.00-1172.66][S05] but also anything we can obtain about when these maps are going to come out and how[1172.66-1178.00][S05] it might impact communities that have these maps. Because I think that'll be the bigger,[1178.00-1179.00][S05] bigger issue.[1179.00-1186.00][S01] I mean, certainly having Casey come and talk to us, right, could be to the,[1189.66-1194.81][S01] especially now, right, as we're having, because could be helpful. Townsend, right?[1194.81-1199.73][S10] Yeah, I guess I care less about me being on the cutting edge of knowing and[1199.73-1206.73][S10] more having practical talking points that I can give to citizens who are working through[1208.25-1212.66][S10] this, because I know all of us get calls and letters. And so to the extent we are[1212.66-1218.48][S10] hearing about people that are doing coverage, if we hear about actual changes that are[1218.48-1224.48][S10] going to be, it was, it was more that. It was more the, because the rate of hopefully[1224.48-1229.73][S10] solutions coming is relatively quick, something just like a once a month. So it was, it was[1229.73-1234.33][S10] more the practical, what do we tell people in the community so we can be part of the[1234.33-1235.33][S10] solution.[1235.33-1239.81][S05] Okay, I will try to think about how to best do that. And maybe it could do[1239.81-1242.81][S05] it as part of city manager's reports, but let me think about it. Okay?[1242.81-1249.81][S09] One, one thing that I've learned recently, getting a house ready for sale, is that[1250.75-1257.75][S09] the realtors know what insurance companies are doing business in Sleepy Hollow. And[1260.25-1266.00][S09] I'm sure it's going to be renamed as High Severity Area. I just gotta believe it. It's right[1266.00-1272.81][S09] next to Brione's. So anyway, that's one tip to talk to our realtors and I can tell you[1272.81-1273.81][S09] one or two.[1273.81-1274.81][S01] Sure.[1274.81-1281.81][S01] Okay, any, and, and I started it by, but we don't, we don't want to get into[1282.12-1286.66][S01] a full discussion on these issues, but council member reports. Is there anything else anyone[1286.66-1293.66][S01] wants to report on? We are going to the Calcity's Academy starting early tomorrow in Sacramento.[1295.00-1298.83][S01] And Councilmember Hoxsey and I will be attending along with our city manager.[1298.83-1305.83][S01] And then there is, there are Calcity's Policy Committees meeting on Friday among the Community[1306.81-1313.81][S01] Affairs Committee, but I did reach out to the Public Safety, Public Service, Public[1314.06-1321.06][S01] Safety Committee and asked them what they're doing about wildfire and evacuation, emergency[1321.31-1327.62][S01] preparedness, because I feel like the squeaky, we, I know that our council, Councilmember[1327.62-1333.12][S01] G. was squeaky as mayor last year, and I think that, that, I'm going to continue to[1333.12-1338.00][S01] be squeaky and as I know we all will, just to keep that forefront.[1338.00-1341.81][S01] Okay.[1341.81-1344.62][S01] City managers' report?[1344.62-1348.41][S05] Okay, I'll keep it brief, but I, I think one of the things that I think is[1348.41-1352.81][S05] on everyone's mind and we continue to talk about it is wildfire preparedness and disaster[1352.81-1359.00][S05] preparedness. And I think there's things that we could be doing to help improve our[1359.12-1364.66][S05] communication and trying to wrap my head around how we can do that in an effective[1364.66-1369.83][S05] way. But I hope to be back to you with some suggestions around that in a couple meetings[1369.83-1375.31][S05] from now. In the meantime, I've been meeting with various parties. I'm going to be meeting[1375.31-1381.06][S05] and sitting down with Chief Isaacs to figure out a way that, how we can work together[1381.06-1387.62][S05] on sort of community education series, ways in which we can be out in the community[1387.62-1392.38][S05] and listen and hear from people and kind of try to address concerns that residents[1392.38-1397.50][S05] might have. There's been a lot of public discussion, as you've seen the San Francisco[1397.50-1404.50][S05] Chronicle article, about sort of Arinda's position being a place that is of great concern[1405.16-1411.12][S05] long-term for wildfire risk. East Bay Mud has issued notifications to inform the public[1411.12-1414.91][S05] about its fire prevention and routine maintenance so we can make sure that that is shared.[1414.91-1419.48][S05] And we've tried to share that on our platforms. We've tried to make improvements to the Arinda[1419.48-1424.56][S05] outlook to have a whole section dedicated to emergency preparedness, disaster preparedness.[1424.56-1431.56][S05] And so we're working on that. And I think our chipper program continues to be very[1431.50-1436.41][S05] effective. And we just need to, and we have, of course, right on our homepage, under the[1436.41-1440.16][S05] meetings list is the preparedness list. I think we're going to spend a little bit more[1440.16-1445.98][S05] time trying to organize that page and figuring out and maybe talking with Chief Isaacs on[1445.98-1452.98][S05] maybe a way to jointly communicate what's going on in both of our jurisdictional areas.[1454.23-1461.23][S05] Ours focused a lot on fuel reduction and incentives and evacuation and them on the[1461.83-1466.31][S05] efforts that they're putting forth with the residents and the community, and also looking[1466.31-1470.23][S05] at the nonprofit partners. So I, I feel like there's some improvement that we can do[1470.23-1474.00][S05] there, and I'm, I'm going to be working towards doing that and hopefully be back to you with[1474.00-1478.66][S05] a comprehensive approach. But in the meantime, I think education's going to be important.[1478.66-1482.06][S05] And I'm going to talk to Chief Isaacs about whether or not we can start working together[1482.06-1484.62][S05] on some outreach meetings with the community.[1484.62-1485.62][S05] Okay?[1485.62-1490.83][S01] Great, thank you. And I'm going to, we, next is matters initiated. I have one[1490.83-1497.83][S01] that I can propose in 30 seconds, which is spawned by, I think, the public comment[1499.06-1506.06][S01] from the resident who, after 50 years, got non-renewed because of an oak tree. And the,[1507.41-1514.23][S01] what I'd like to do is have our tree ordinance come back to our council for, to revisit it[1514.23-1521.23][S01] to see if there's ways that we can reexamine it in a what manner to make it more consistent[1521.91-1527.73][S01] and more encouraging of reduction of fuels. Because right now, if you have a oak tree[1527.73-1532.73][S01] within five feet of your house or four feet of your house, you still have to get a permit[1532.88-1539.23][S01] is the understanding. So, so I don't know if anyone else is interested in bringing[1539.23-1540.73][S01] that back. I'm hoping so, but.[1540.73-1545.62][S09] I did ask a question about that earlier today, and I thought there was an exception[1545.62-1551.06][S09] or an exemption from the ordinance if it was something that the fire district required.[1551.06-1554.23][S05] Yeah, so right now, there is no requirement because there is no Zone Zero provision.[1554.23-1560.83][S05] So if you're looking to create defensible space around your home, you still would have[1560.83-1561.83][S05] to get a permit.[1561.83-1565.23][S01] Can I ask a motion just to extend the meeting by one minute till 10, or two[1565.23-1566.23][S01] minutes till 10:22?[1566.23-1567.23][S09] Five.[1567.23-1570.23][S11] Yeah, so moved.[1570.23-1571.23][S02] Second.[1571.23-1573.23][S01] All in favor?[1573.23-1574.23][S02] Aye.[1574.23-1575.23][S01] Any opposed?[1575.23-1576.23][S01] Okay.[1576.23-1580.23][S01] So I, right, right now, we're not discussing. It's just a question of do we want to bring[1580.23-1581.23][S01] it back? I'm not.[1581.23-1582.23][S09] I think it's good to review it.[1582.23-1586.91][S01] Okay, so is there, I'm, I'm making a motion that we, we revisit the tree ordinance,[1586.91-1591.12][S01] bring it back to the council. So we need a second if we want it to come back. So.[1591.12-1592.12][S09] I'll second that.[1592.12-1593.12][S01] All in favor?[1593.12-1594.12][S02] Aye.[1594.12-1595.12][S06] Aye.[1595.12-1596.12][S01] Any opposed?[1596.12-1603.12][S01] Okay. And with that, are there any other matters initiated?[1603.12-1608.62][S09] I just, I appreciate the city manager sharing with us that she's planning educational[1609.83-1615.91][S09] opportunities with MOFD. I, we heard loud and clear that people want a town hall or[1615.91-1621.31][S09] some sort of community meeting. And I'm not 100% sure if what you're recommending[1621.31-1626.41][S09] is what I'm thinking of as a community meeting, but feels like we need to have a community[1626.41-1633.41][S09] meeting with MOFD and perhaps East Bay Mud, perhaps PG&E, all present in one forum for[1633.50-1640.16][S09] people to ask questions and get answers. And it's not just educational, but to have[1640.16-1646.73][S09] some dialogue. And I don't know if we need to have a motion to ask staff to work on that[1646.73-1649.00][S09] or if that's already under, you know, being done.[1649.00-1654.00][S01] I, I, do you want to address that?[1654.00-1655.00][S05] Um.[1655.00-1657.00][S01] I don't know that we need a motion on it.[1657.00-1662.73][S05] Don't know if you need a motion. I, I'll just, I'll see what I can do if[1662.73-1668.00][S05] that's the will of the council to try and engage all the other agencies as well. I[1668.00-1671.62][S05] think that might make it more challenging to put something together in a timely fashion.[1671.62-1678.62][S05] But if, I think, starting with MOFD, since the primary roles of what we do is, is.[1678.62-1681.62][S09] Right, I think starting with MOFD.[1681.62-1684.91][S01] I think we are, we're going to have to extend again if we want to discuss it[1684.91-1689.16][S01] more. We could, but I'm just putting that out there.[1689.16-1693.16][S09] If we don't need a motion, I, that's, that's fine. I just, I think starting with[1693.16-1697.91][S09] MOFD and then to the extent other agencies could be present would be great, but not[1697.91-1698.91][S09] necessary to make it successful.[1698.91-1703.83][S01] So do I have a motion and a second to adjourn?[1703.83-1706.83][S02] Well, we're going to adjourn to closed session.[1706.83-1707.83][S01] Okay.[1707.83-1708.83][S02] To adjourn.[1708.83-1712.83][S01] Mayor Malkani, we have a closed session item, hoping we can still.[1712.83-1715.83][S01] Yes, we're going to be adjourning to closed session. Sorry.[1715.83-1719.83][S02] But if there's any public comment on the closed session item listed on the agenda[1719.83-1722.83][S02] now would be the time.[1722.83-1724.83][S01] Hearing no public comment.[1724.83-1731.23][S01] We'll close public comment. Thank you. So we are adjourning to closed session.[1731.23-1738.23]